Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to the Township Council Meeting for October 11th, 2022. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Council President, Susan McCartney.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending our October 11th Town Council Meeting. I can't believe it's October, but we, the first thing, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. We're always, yeah.
This is to-
Always anxious to get some-
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 24th, 2021, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2nd, 2021. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So the first thing on our agenda this evening is a presentation from our Senior Services Coordinator and Social Worker, because today, this month is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So I'd like to introduce Laura Van Dyke to talk about that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is it this one? I'll let you do it. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Madam, are we okay?
You can hear me all right?
Yeah, that's sound loud, but-
Okay.
Are both microphones on?
Is this better?
I don't know if that-
Okay.
I don't see the green light on the microphone.
This one's red?
Click that. There you go. Now try talking.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Oh, all right. Thank you. So thank you for the invitation to be here, Council Madam President. I'm Laura Van Dyke. A few things. So I'm the coordinator of our Senior Services Program. And also, also through our department, we oversee the Domestic Violence Response Team. So it's myself and my colleague, Noelia Perez, who's, is not here tonight, but a tremendous colleague and contributor to this, to our divert team. So this October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And so, given that, we are trying a little harder to do a little bit more outreach and raise awareness. There is a need for awareness on this challenging topic. That is more challenging coming through a difficult pandemic. So West Orange has a wonderful volunteer program called DIVERT, which is the domestic violence response team. We work very closely with the Police Department, Chief Abbott. I thank you for that, because that's not always the case. But it certainly is here. And so, the divert team has been in existence for 20 years or more, started by my predecessor, Patty Duffy. And so, we're glad to have been, be at this point, especially as we were, went through the pandemic and we had to pivot and modify how we were working. So to be a volunteer on our team entails managing a couple of shifts a month as a supporter of a victim who comes into the police station. So you sign up for a shift ahead of time, and then the police would reach out to you. You remain anonymous, but you do come in and you would meet with a victim and provide needed support and resources. So the way to do that was to start would be to complete a 40-hour training that's put on by Rachel Coalition. There's an upcoming session beginning, I guess the next slide, Joe, will tell us those dates, October 26th. So you could reach out there to Sherri Goldman, or you could, you could call myself at the Department of Senior Services, and I could help get anyone interested connected. So we have about 20 volunteers. We're always looking for more, and it's a very important role, and we're really grateful. It's been a model program, one that other communities have looked to for input. We have, in the past, we were overseen by Rachel Coalition, and now the Safe House has taken on that role. We have a new coordinator. They've just donated some coloring books and toys to us on Friday, which we will place in the divert room within the police station. So with children are present, they can both use those items and leave with them. So we're always looking for more supplies. So we do get calls, and if someone is, "What can I do? I can't volunteer, but maybe I could make a donation." We're always looking for some supplies, such as $10 or $15 food cards, say to Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks, where we could hand that while a person is in the room and let them leave with that. That would be something that would be helpful. Or to-go toiletry bags that we could give to someone who's not able to go home that night. Maybe they're going to stay in another location. And those are, and I could talk through that with someone who might be interested in donating. And, let's see, I wanted to also just mention an interesting collaboration with Jewish Family Service Metro West and the library. We're going to be holding an experiential, you can choose the slide, event in a few weeks, and I was hoping to have that date set by tonight. I don't yet, so stay tuned. But it's, it's, it'll be an interesting workshop, basically, at the library that helps a person kind of navigate in her shoes what it's like to, to kind of walk in the shoes of a victim, in a, you know, in a format that's very informative, and resources would be available as well. So that would be the other slide, Joe? There it is. So that speaks a little bit about of, just, you know, it's hard for people to fully understand what, what it's like, and especially when you're a family member or friend, and you're trying to understand. It's a wonderful resource. So we're excited to bring that to the library for the first time. Please stay tuned for, for that date. And I think that, that's it.
I think that's wonderful.
Do you have any questions?
Well, not, oh.
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Van Dyke, for such a meaningful presentation on something that affects more often than not, people that we know in the community. But my question would be, for those who are interested in volunteering, can you speak to a time requirement or commitment? Often, when you volunteer, that's the question that people have. How much time do I really have to commit?
Right.
So after the 40-hour training session, what would volunteerism look like on a monthly basis, bare minimum?
Thank you. So it's two shifts, and I didn't explain what that meant. And it's about an eight-hour shift, which could be from, you know, midnight to 6:00 AM, which would be six hours. But there's three shifts available during one day. We ask for a minimum of two shifts a month. So-
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for that.
And Laura, that actually means, though, you're on call.
You're on, thank you. So, thank you. Yes. So that, what that means is you're on call. So you're at home, you're nearby. The, the ask is that you're, say, within 15 or 20 minutes of your home, so that if you were to get that call, you could come to the police station within, say, like, 15 or 20 minutes. And you only come if you get that call. So more often than not, you're not receiving a call, but you're covering a shift. And we have backup on-call people who do, who are very active on the, on the team. So that, that's how that works.
Thank you.
Is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Makes sense. I also wanted to let you know that the West Orange Women's Club, at their last meeting, talked about doing a collection to donate to the Safe House. So I am going to coordinate that with you about how do we collect and where can we store the items.
Thank you. And I really appreciate that offering. And I'd be happy to speak to, to, to their representative to help sort of tailor what would be optimal.
Yep.
And, so I'd gladly do that.
And thank you for these two suggestions as well. Good.
Before we go, can you just, for those that are going to be viewing later, give your contact information so they can reach out?
That was next.
Thank you. So Laura Van Dyke, and my phone number is 973-325-4105. Should I give my email, or?
LauraVanDyke@WestOrange.org.
Yes. L Van Dyke@WestOrange.org.
And spelled that Van Dyke, because, you know.
You, thank you.
So L Van Dyke, B-A-N-D-Y-K-E@WestOrange.org.
We're here to prompt the assist.
Yeah, I think we're all here to make sure everybody knows clearly how to get in touch with you.
Right. And if you have any questions, that's telephone to call.
Yeah, and I'm happy to really entertain any phone calls or inquiries. I appreciate the time to, to speak about this tonight, and, and any input is welcome, so.
Thank you very much for you and your team and Police Department.
Great. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. This is not on our agenda, but we had a kind of exciting news from the county last week, creating a parklet, Meg, I hope.
Way shorter than Laura.
Get the other one too, Meg. Yeah.
Ah, there we go. I'm going to take my glasses off so I can see you guys. I'm Megan Brill, Executive Director with the Downtown Alliance. We have a couple of things that happened this past week, kept us very busy. One was a parklet. We partnered with the county, Essex County, and we built a parklet in front of Benji's and Christina Grill down here in St. Mark's Square. So the county was working on Plan 2045. What they're trying to do is create a better understanding of what people's fears and concerns are with traffic patterns, both as a pedestrian, as a driver, somebody walking alongside buses, cars, and trains. So they had a survey set up, and instead of just popping up a tent and saying, "Can you take my survey?", they decided to build a parklet. Little bit about parklets are that they are a calming measure. This is a picture, this is the survey. This is, this is the parklet. So those polka dots are a calming measure that goes along with pedestrian safety and complete streets. It tends to slow down traffic. You're stopping to say, "What are, what is all this activity? What's happening over there?" So they set up the parklet. We set it up. It took about four hours to set up, and then we hung out there for about four hours. They got about 150 different people. That is our, Will Ardone there was our best volunteer. He's actually in the back there. He helps, he's been helping me all week. Really, really great, great guy to have around. So we, we partnered with the Department of Transportation and the county, and we had a great day. The, whenever you take up parking spots, it's always a tricky thing with our business owners. And they loved it. They want us to do every downtown Thursday there and set up a parklet for them all the time. So it definitely wasn't eye-catching, I think. The second thing that we had was our Mayor's Five Kid Run for ALS. And that was Sunday, and, oh, we didn't change the date. It's the ninth. That's okay. Next year, it may be the tenth. I don't know. So, yeah, so this was our first year partnering with the ALS team, and it was an emotional day. We had, the ROTC was in the house at 6:00 in the morning, along with Will. And the day before, Will spent all day with me getting downtown and Main Street ready for the run. And they were, they were exceptional. They got, they were in my office at 5:00 to 6:00 in the morning. And then they stayed and helped us all clean up. So it really was, took a lot less support from Public Works in order to help us get everything done. So we raised about $20,000, which was great. Karen's Jack's Pack team was the leading team fundraiser. We're going to get a post about that. It was a, what, what we found was that there was a lot of people in town whose family members are battling ALS or have succumbed to ALS. And there's, we set a really good stage for this turning into the bigger runs that we've had when we partnered with other organizations. So I want to thank everybody that came, everybody that donated. The donation link is on our website. It's still available for the next couple of weeks. And I honestly could not have done this without all the extra help that around. Right. Yeah. Jack, Jack was great. He, you know, he looked great. His whole family was here. We put out a video of, about Jack's story, and I got to meet all of his family. We kind of knew each other for being in town, but I got to talk to Jeff and Jacqueline and, you know. I learned a lot more about Jack and his family, and, and this is a tough disease. And we need a cure. And so it's going to be our thing. Harvey Lot sang, he's off to the right, that's mayor. Harvey is our resident national anthem singer, and he did great. Knocked it out of the park. So it was, it was a great day. If you haven't sent any donations in, we're still taking them. And please volunteer in any of the other activities that we do. Yeah, that's, we are West Orange. It was great. Thanks, Joe, for all those pictures. Okay, then the last thing that we have going on is our downtown app. It's a West Orange app. So we have these cards, which I don't see Anthony Puglisi yet. So Michelle had contacted Joe D. and Anthony, and we're going to put our mobile app information in all of the county sites in town and encourage their visitors to download our app and find out all kinds of stuff about West Orange. We also have table tents that we made up, and that's a great, a great poster. We have table tents that are going to go on counters and restaurants, and this lawn's all around town. And we have our stats on it as of last week. I may get a chance today to look up the stats, but we have 2,600 users and over 28,000 regular views on the app. So people are searching. And I find that I'm, I go to the app. I know where restaurants are or what hours are, and it's so easy to go into the app instead of regular Google. And the last stat about how we're really helping our business and property owners, not just downtown, but in the entire township, it's a great tool for the property owners to sell to their businesses that are going to come in and rent from them. And it's also a great tool to up everyone on the Google search list. When you're finding, when I get to keep talking about somebody, it searches it up on, on the Google search engines. So it's many-faceted, and you know what? We could not have done this without the PRC. They have been like the leading charge. We've talked to all our property owners because of them and our business owners, and they're going to get this stuff out into our community. So you can download the app in the Play Store, it's downtown West Orange app, and, and it's easy, Android and iPhone. And there's a whole bunch of stuff, parking information, restaurant directory. Events are listed in there. There's 10 township organizational, township links that, because sometimes our website's a little overwhelming. So we put a great link in there for like the top 10 things everyone cares about in town. So it's really a great tool for all of us to use, and it's sponsored by the Downtown Alliance. Do you have any questions?
No, seeing none.
I have a question. Is this solely for downtown businesses, or, no?
Yes, townwide. Yeah.
So everyone in town can participate?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Brick and mortar.
Yeah. They have to fill out a form, yeah, brick and mortar stores. So we kind of talked about that. We didn't want the, like, the crafter that makes stuff at home. So brick and mortar stores, anybody who's just like, "Fill out the form and get me a logo", and we'll put them in. We did not, we did go around town. All of the hotels are in. We're slowly getting the banks in. The banks are not as cooperative as you would think. So we are, we're getting all the banks in. A lot of the hair and beauty salons in town are in, and, and all of the restaurants in town are in.
Is there a charge to be listed in the directory? Is there a charge to be listed in the directory?
There is not a charge yet.
Okay, so can, so there's not a charge yet?
Kind of a hot to be.
Do we have an anticipated timeframe of when that might change? So let's be very transparent.
I'll, I'll answer that. So the grant money, we've been very successful in getting our marketing grants. We were just awarded additional grant, not huge, but, you know, $3,500, which pays for the materials, and amongst other things. So if we continue to receive marketing grants, the, we'll be able to minimalize the charge. Any, anyone who's not in the Downtown Alliance would be charged. So the Downtown Alliance has been subsidizing for anyone in the CID, anyone townwide. Right now, we're going to upload, and down the road, there may be a minimal fee. However, that is fully disclosed when the person signs up for the app. And so far, you know, no one has been disputing that. So we're going to do what we do, trying to continue to bring grants into the township and to help subsidize and get our business owners, a lot of them, on their feet. And, and, you know, when the time comes, there will be a minimal charge.
So unfortunately, that wasn't an answer to my question, and I'm being very transparent.
No, no, yeah, but we are being very transparent to the business owners that we're loading up.
So what, right now, what is a timeframe that you can get into this program without having a financial impact, so that we can make sure everyone who is interested gets in before or before the program changes? Because right now, what you're saying is that it's free.
Yes, right now, it's free.
But we don't have a timeline to say, "If you get in, you'll be grandfathered. If you don't get in, what will the charge be?" So can we just be very clear on what is to come?
So we haven't determined a charge yet. So I'm anticipating a minimal charge of $100 a year, starting next summer.
In, in addition to the CID charge that you have if you're in the downtown district?
No, no, no. Well, the CID charge, if you're a business owner, it goes with the tax, it goes with the ownership taxes. So the businesses themselves, if they're renting from their landlord, aren't necessarily hit with the tax. It's, it's the property owner. That's how our CID works, is a special assessment tax. So right now, we're, we're trying to provide a service to get, you know, to get marketing for our community, for our business community. And if we could continue to do so without a significant charge, we will. So it doesn't hurt the business owner to upload now, because it gives them additional exposure. Ms. Brill, anyone in the CID gets automatically uploaded in. We educate them. She sends them out. They're on their 365 program. So they're constantly getting information about, about the app. And we're trying to get specials from the business owners, because the deals icon we see is constantly used. So we try and encourage our business owners to give us a deal. So it will bring more traffic to their site. But if you're a business owner outside the CID, we're encouraging you to sign up, and there may be a charge, most likely be a charge down the road, maybe $100 for, for the year. Again, minimal charge.
Can I mention one other thing? The cost of the app, once we've created it, and it's, and it's through the Apple Store, which was the harder, harder store to get through, the ongoing cost is $275 a month. And with 500 businesses that are already in the directory, you're looking at a fee of like $10. So even if we do go to charge a fee, it's not, it's going to be, it'll be small. And we're really hoping that when the banks come in, that they'll get an advertisement piece on the banking page, and that they would pay a bigger, a bigger lift. So there's all kinds of different ways that we can help support our business owners without charging them a fee. The other part about this is that the management of collecting fees from people is going to be really hard. Just trying to keep track of that, it has my brain going crazy. So at the cost of $275 a month, it's not a huge amount of money. And then the second part about that is, we always find, after being around here for nine years, that whenever we partner with the Chamber of Commerce and other parts of our township, it benefits downtown. People would say, "Oh, it's a downtown thing. I don't care about that." But if it's a whole-town thing, they're going to say, "Oh, we have stores down here too." So they're going to look at it and take a second look when it's a broader base. So I think that that is worth a $275 investment that we're making on the part of downtown.
I was going to kind of piggyback on what you just said, because it reminded me of the property tax credit card that we partnered with between the West Orange Chamber and the downtown. And we did get points for that on the Sustainable Jersey application.
There's still a little bit of money of that left in that.
Well, okay. And last year, we did get points for the Farmers Market downtown from Sustainable Jersey, and they just started a shop local campaign too. So as the Sustainable Jersey Coordinator for the township, I will look and see if there is funding opportunities there as well. Good.
I'm also working on other grants, I'm not grants, sponsorships with our various events that we've been having. So it all just ties together. So to answer your question, I don't have a definitive answer, because we're trying to continue this free of charge for our business owners until we can.
Right. If the, the banks and the grocery stores, the new grocery store and Pleasantale, Whole Foods, if they were to pick up a month or help subsidize, that keeps it, keeps it all going without any cost to everyone.
My, my concern is simply that we are a community of small business owners, and we need to do everything we possibly can to support our small business owners. So adding any additional charge, you know, is difficult when you look at how our town and businesses are formulated.
It's definitely a hot to be on, on our board.
And we know, and that's why we're trying to provide the service free of charge.
That's why I'll look for a grant opportunity.
Just a point of clarification. I think Councilwoman Williams also was asking about a, the ability to be grandfathered in if you join before a certain time. From what I understand, from your answers, there are no, that will not be the case. You will not be grandfathered in if you join now when it's free. Once the charge happens, if you're not in the CID, which, for those that don't know, is a Special Improvement District. If you're not in the CID, you will be charged. You will not be able to avoid it, even if you sign up while it's free.
So if you sign up now, yes, there will, you will not be grandfathered in. CID members will be free. Non-CID members, right now, are free. We're going to continue to try to get marketing grants and other sponsorship grants. And until we can't, it'll be a minimal fee, and we will give well in advance, you know, six, six months in advance. So no one's going to get hit overhead. No one's going to get hurt. This is a benefit for especially our small business owners. And we're going to continue to do all we can and the best we can for them. So we encourage them to sign up, because it's really not much to sign up. It's just giving us your information. We download it on the app, and it's great exposure for them. So there's really not much to it. It's, it's a great benefit for them. And it's easy, and the reason why we're encouraging everybody now, because there's been a debate, "Why don't you have them pay and sign up if they're not in the CID?" Well, it's easier, because through this program, communication, the communication of it, Ms. Brill, to communicate with all the business owners, is she's able to send out that information. Do you want to continue this program? And, you know, and then, then you would have by whatever date to pay, if you have to pay. So the communication piece is there, the mechanism, I'm sorry, that's the word I'm looking for. The mechanism piece is in there. If you're signed up and all the data is there, it's easier to communicate with them and to track that. So we, but we will notify everybody, just like, you know, in, in advance. And again, it would be minimal. It will be minimal. So, and hopefully, we can continue to provide this for free, and we'll see how it goes. But like, right now, we're excited. We just received another grant for all the marketing materials, which is awesome. And so we're going to continue to provide services wherever we can by putting our time, our own time in. We, Ms. Brill, Joe Fagan, has been, you know, we've been working on this with the PRC, because it's all volunteer work, trying to upload this app. It's been all volunteer work. So this way, to keep costs down, so we have to hire someone to, to do that. So we're going to continue to do that.
I see the lateness of the hour, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan. And thank you for that parklet, and I thank you to the county for picking West Orange. We can save our council liaison announcements to-
Sure.
-later in the evening. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 24th, 2021, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 2nd, 2021. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
So, good evening, Mr. Fagan.
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, West Orange. I am Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer, and I typically start the public comment session with a few brief announcements. Um, just a reminder, the town is still in need of, uh, crossing guards, so please contact, um, Kate Davenport, too, at westorange.org if you are available, or just if you want to find out more information to see what opportunities might be available for you. We are getting to that time of year, dare I say, the year is coming to a close, and we're going to have, begin fall, uh, leaf pickup on October 31st. Uh, I'm not going to read these bullet points, but this is important information, and this is on our website, as all the information I will be presenting tonight, at westorange.org. So, um, I would suggest that you familiarize yourself with the procedures and, uh, regulations because there are some in place. Um, I'd like to announce that there's a free concert coming up October 26th for the West Orange Community Band at Liberty Middle School. They do a fantastic job. Uh, please consider coming out and supporting the West Orange Community Band. Also, a reminder, uh, on October 16th is West Orange Shredding Day. I mentioned this at the last meeting, but it's worth bringing up again because the next scheduled date isn't until next year. Council President, did I just say next year? I can't believe it. But it's April 23rd of next year. So, uh, please consider, uh, this date to, to be able to make it. And, um, also, it's worth mentioning that the county, uh, this is available to West Orange residents for, uh, computers, electronic recycling. Uh, once again, this information is available on our website. Uh, this past week, we had an Italian Heritage Flag Day raising on the steps of Town Hall. Uh, it came off the heels of the rainy weather, and it turned out to be a great day, weather-wise. The, uh, um, Ms. Brill mentioned before, the cadets, well, they, uh, brought in the colors at this event, and the, uh, West Orange High School Italian Honor Society sang the Italian National Anthem. It was a great day. Um, also, we had, um, a great community outreach from the West Orange Police Department, October 6th. Uh, Coffee with the Cop returned, uh, for the first time in two years out, uh, inside. It had been outside during the pandemic, and, um, it was from nine, nine to 12, and it was, uh, it was just a great day. People were, uh, in, welcome to see the cops, and, uh, the Community Service Unit had a table spread out with all information. And, um, one thing of note is, uh, the woman in the center of the picture there is Mariam Cortez, I believe is her name, and she's from the Medical Associates of Morrison, Essex. And, uh, we talked in depth, um, about the program and how successful it has been as coresponders to, um, uh, mental health issues within the community, people exhibiting signs of mental health. And, uh, not only do that, they, um, are they coresponders, they also provide training to the officers. And the underlying theme, of course, is to de-escalate, uh, any situation. And, uh, there were, we were told, I was told that, um, other, uh, law enforcement agencies are starting to reach out to the West Orange PD now, uh, as, as a, um, benchmark for their program. So it's a very successful program, and of course, Chief Abbott is here, he can talk about it later if he wants. It's worth mentioning that, uh, the, our, a West Orange Public Health Nurse, Susan Iovino, has retired after 32 years. Um, she was a key element, a key member of the OEM team during the, uh, dark days of COVID and helped, uh, West Orange residents, uh, through that, uh, bleak time in our, uh, recent history. And it's interesting to note that, uh, in speaking to her, that she was, um, inspired by her, uh, late grandmother, Rita Yurg, who was one of the, if not one of the, not the first, uh, school nurse here in, uh, not school nurse, town nurse in West Orange, excuse me. Um, I also want to mention, um, that Township Council meetings are available on our website at westorange.org. Now, it is true that they are not up and running on the, uh, TV channels in town here, but that is run by the, uh, West Orange Board of Education. I, I, uh, reached out to them, and they don't have a date when they will be, uh, back online on TV. Um, uh, they are updating their system. The way I understand it, it's an old analog system, they're converting it to digital, and, uh, they have run into supply chain issues. So it's, uh, it's going to be down indefinitely. But the meetings have always been available online, and, uh, even over here on the left side of the screen, you can see, uh, prior years, and they go back to, uh, 2013. So, um, you're always, they, they might not be up the next day, but they are always up within a few days on our website. Ms. Brill spoke about the town app, um, so I don't need to speak about that. Also, you may have noticed, or will notice, that there is a new e-sign board up in front of West Orange Town Hall. Uh, and I believe this was paid for by a grant to the Health Department. It will, um, I understand, be able to display graphics, and of course, there will be a color element to this, uh, so it will spruce things up in the front of Town Hall. And before I conclude, I always like to share on this day in West Orange history, and on October 11th, 1929, Thomas A. Edison Junior High School opened as the first junior high school in West Orange. Uh, and Mr. Edison himself did attend the dedication. I suspect the school opened in September of that year, but was dedicated in October. And, uh, actually, in looking at that date, Mr. Edison himself passed away October 18th, 1931. So it was just, uh, short, uh, just a little, two years almost to the day when, uh, Mr. Edison, uh, passed away. So, uh, Council President, that concludes my report for this evening. Uh, any member of the public wishing to contact me may do so, uh, at my email address, jfagan@westorange.org. And I'd be able to, I'd be glad to assist you with anything seen here tonight or any other questions that you may have. Thank you very much, Council President. Have a good meeting.
Thank you very much, Joe. I do have one question for you, and, and I wanted to thank the Police Department, too. In December, we did highlight the presentation the chief gave on the $525,000 grant to create that pilot partnership with Mental Health Association on our police department. So thank you for...
I'm owing, I'm owing the messenger and deserve very little credit. Uh, other people deserve much more credit, but thank you for pointing that out, Council President.
That we are another pilot to do that. On your slide about the leaf pickup, beginning on October 31st, I would like you to add a bullet about keeping the leaves away from storm drains?
Yes, that is, uh, one of the, um, one of the components that I spoke about that will be on our website, yes, keeping the leaves away from the stor, the storm drain. There's a, a whole, uh, list of regulations that need to be complied with, and I didn't want to clog up, uh, with too much, too much information here. Uh, I simply wanted to point out that leaf pickup is beginning. We have some ti, you have some time to prepare, but please check the website or give me a call in the office, and I'd be glad to go over all the regulations with you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Council President.
So I wanted to go back to the slide with the new, um, display that we have.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Council-
Slide with the display that we have, with the display in front of Town Hall?
Oh, oh, the e-sign, I'm sorry.
So I noticed that we had an insert, um, with Unico there. Is that something that was just inserted, or is that?
No, that, I, I, I don't know if that's coming down or not, but it was not inserted. That was on the old e-sign because I believe that Unico had donated the previous sign. I don't know if that's going to stay there or not. I could not answer that question.
I'm, I'm just always interested in sponsorship opportunities.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Unico was also involved in the community bench that is opposite the Thomas Edison National Stirk Park.
And this only went up like two days ago, so it's, uh, and, uh, the way I understand it is that, uh, the three people who will have access to it have not even yet received their training.
Training.
So there's a lot of unanswered questions, but I wanted to point out to the, uh, public that there will be a new e-sign, and they have that to look forward to as they pass Town Hall.
That's a lot of information, Joe. Thank you very much.
That's why they're called Public Information.
There you go. And Susan Iovino also.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. If anyone else has any comments or questions, please come up, name and address for the record.
Hi, Susan Scarpa, 343 Gregory Avenue.
Good evening.
It's so wonderful to be back here in Town Hall with all of you, talking about a topic that you know is near and dear to my heart, our seniors. My passion for our seniors emanates from my Italian values of family, my formal education in aging as a speech-language pathologist, and a decade of research and senior advocacy in our community. But most of all, my recent experience as a primary caregiver for my dad, Ernie Scarpa, the late Ernie Scarpa. It was, um, those years of watching town council meetings with him, when I couldn't leave him alone and come out in person, that really deepened my understanding and my resolve to persevere until we have a Senior Citizen Advisory Board and a Senior Citizen Center. Uh, he, he, I, he, I promised him that I would continue to advocate until this happened, and I know he's here with us today. Senior, uh, this, this, I want to thank Michelle Castellino, who's been really incredible about getting senior services in place in our township, um, helping us achieve our goal to get that senior citizen survey that really made clear what we really needed and, um, led to the hiring-
Ms. Scarpa, can you talk in both microphones?
Yeah, sure. It led to the hiring of Laura Van Dyke, who, how's that?
Yeah, because they're having trouble hearing.
Who really has been wonderful, and with her staff, Nuela and Dorothy, have really been an invaluable resource to our community. And they were the first step in helping us reach our goals of getting a Senior Citizen Advisory Board and a Senior Citizen Center, just like every other township in Essex County has. Our town council videos back in September of 2016 really demonstrate what could be achieved when our community unites around our seniors. When Rosary Morelli assembled our Senior Advocacy Committee, we met at my house for almost a year, and we looked at the evidence-based net, uh, research, we networked with other townships, we learned about the personal plight of seniors here in our community, and presented to the council. I can still see the smile on Ernie's face as he listened to our, us and our meetings, and then gave me feedback at the end of the day. But this research clearly illustrated the need for more robust services, the Advisory Board, the Senior Center, just like every other township in Essex County has. But this is not just a seniors issue. COVID has shown us that loneliness and depression takes place in all age groups when they lack socialization, recreation, and exercise. I've canvassed neighborhoods and met so many caregivers who had the same problems that I had, dealing with isolation of their elderly parents. And I realized that we had to bring this to our community now and give you an idea of the sense of urgency of the problem. I've also met with many residents who have children who feel need more recreational facilities, particularly children that don't play sports and would love to see an intergenerational community center. The need for intergenerational activities has long been clear to us, primarily by Rosary Morelli for years. And it was most evident when she and I implemented our Teen Techies and Senior Storytellers programs into Redwood School. I taught the children how to interview seniors. She brought a number of prominent seniors who were doing interesting things in the community, and it was amazing how much they learned from one another, not only about history, but just lifetime lessons that you can't teach. It was absolutely amazing. And I think we need to do this, and I really think the Toby Katz Center is an underutilized asset. I'd like to see us try to make that an intergenerational community center, not for both seniors and for families. I believe it's a matter of fundamental fairness. Our seniors are more than 20% of our taxpayers, and they're not getting a return on their investments. We talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, but we're not really practicing it. We've excluded our seniors from-
Your time is up.
-participation. I'd like to talk just another minute-
Just finish your sentence.
-because I think it's really important. Um, you know, back in 2017, uh, Joe Prokoviak brought up an ordinance for a Senior Citizen Advisory Board. And I think it's time that we dust that ordinance off, that we take a look at it, that we bring it back on, in our next meeting. Since it's already written, I'd really like to see everyone dust it up, put it through the channels. There's really, at this point, no reason why we can't put that ordinance in place. And I'd like all of you to do that for our next meeting. I'm sure Joe would be happy to work with you. He's probably got it in the archives. But it's very, very important at this point.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to introduce Marie, my student, who was involved in that Senior Storytellers, and I'd like her to talk next so she could tell you a little bit about, about the program and why it's so important for both the seniors and the students in our community.
Excellent. Welcome.
Um, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Marie Costa. My name is Marie, and, um, I'm going to be talking about something that one of the students-
Marie, can I have your last name, too, please?
Sorry, sorry. Costa Sparks.
Can you spell that?
And your address?
15 Crystal I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And today, I'm going to be talking about, um, what, what, what one of the students wrote, um, in the pamphlet, um, about seniors, about their experiences with seniors. And this student, her name is Jennifer Fernandez, and she said that working with seniors was a valuable experience to me because it showed me what people of a different generation believed in, and also how grateful they were. The ability to speak with someone for the first time of a totally different age group was life-changing for me. The experience proved to me that instead of pointing out each other's differences, when we admire and accept those who are different from us, we become closer as a community. Furthermore, learning from people who have gone through so much and were so wise, thoughtful, and kind made it clear that we will all go through tough moments in our lives, and nobody has it easy, but we need to help each other when we fall. It also made me so delighted to see the seniors' faces and how excited they were. Their stories are so meaningful to me, and I hope that others get to experience what I have, and that the seniors live long, beautiful lives. And that is what this student said. Um, yeah.
Marie, thank you very much, Marie. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Name and address, please?
Uh, Garen Dixon, 134 South Valley Road. It's great to hear all the, the, uh, resources and things going down in the West Orange, downtown West Orange. However, I speak from a different part of town, kind of the forgotten part of town. Um, but here we go. My name is Garen. I am a West Orange resident for many years. Some know me for a cafe I opened in town a few years ago, Harper's Cafe. A small cafe here in West Orange with a lot of character, charm, of course, coffee, and amazing customers. But what I'm, what I'm known for most in town is the lunches I did at the start and during the heart of the pandemic in 2020. What started out as doing lunches for kids that relied on school lunch, it quickly shifted to those most at risk, the seniors in town. For months, I prepared with my own two hands thousands of lunches, sometimes waking up at 5:00 AM on days where that was my only time to pack and prepare them. I took pride in helping those less fortunate, especially with the world being flipped upside down. Um, when it was all said and done, I prepared and delivered more than 5,000 lunches here in town, with the majority of them going to the seniors in town. When it was all said and done, I prepared and delivered more than 5,000 lunches here in town, with the majority of them going to the seniors in town. I had plenty of help, though, by way of donations, residents and other local businesses donating baked goods, and plenty of volunteer drivers, because after all, it takes a village. Which takes me to my main point, the village. The village that I own a home in, the village that I opened a business in, is now telling me they had no idea that I was cooking in my cafe all this time, which to me is laughable. During my most recent health inspection, I was informed by the village, excuse me, I was, I mean, West Orange, informed me they had no idea that food was on my menu, and I was issued a violation to install a commercial vent hood, a vent hood that is going to cost me $15,000 to install and service. Might I add, there was no violation during the thousand chicken sandwiches I cooked at the cafe during the pandemic in 2020. I passed my inspection in 2019. I was recently told that my grill was not there during the inspection. It was. I passed my inspection with no issue in 2021. I even passed my inspection at first this year and received a satisfactory certificate, until the health department circled back and switched it with a conditional one. Now I'm faced with closing down my business here in West Orange or somehow come up with $15,000 to do a massive commercial kitchen upgrade in a location that I'm certain my slumlord, landlord, will not renew my lease, which is totally a different gripe I have with the city. I mean, I was going to say the village, but yet the city. I would like to know if the city was negligent in passing my inspections up until this point, why am I the one that has to suffer? Not to mention New Jersey Fire Code being one big up-for-interpretation and discretionary document. I want the council to help me figure out how and why this happened, and what are some reasonable solutions that does not involve me throwing money away, some real solutions so that, that I can stay in business here in West Orange. I have about a minute left, so I also kind of want to speak on the issue with my slumlord landlord. So I'm at 134 South Valley Road. I opened there three years ago to this date. I'm celebrating my three-year anniversary, actually, and I'm here, fighting for my business. So in that location, which was vacant for 10 years, there were thriving businesses. And there was, the, the most recent owner bought it, and those businesses were run out of town. And the building lay vacant for probably nine years until I opened the cafe three years ago. Now, you can drive by, South Valley Road is flourishing, there's a hair salon, there's a nail salon, there's an event space. But during COVID, while I was doing all of the lunches, he sued me, took me to court, told me I owed him $30,000. I had to go to court in 2021. I've never missed a payment on my cafe. I've been on time for every payment, and, but yet I'm fighting in court. Again, I allude to just like the assistance that downtown, the, the businesses in downtown get. I receive none, and I, right now, again, so I just really want some solutions for my present issue. And I'm open to hearing anything and how the city or anybody would like to help. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon, sorry to hear that. I'm really sorry to hear that. Yeah, so we'll answer everyone and then respond. Thank you. Oh, no, I mean, if you wanted to go outside? So, good evening, your name and, name and address, please?
Yes, hi, good evening, my name is Victoria Nelson.
I'm sorry.
It's Victoria Nelson, yes.
And your address?
And my address? It's, are my full address-
You can just skip the road, you don't have to be exact.
Westville Avenue, it's in Caldwell.
I'm sorry, what avenue?
Westville Avenue, yes.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to come here tonight, thank you for having us, is to introduce myself and to, okay, to introduce myself and to, in regards to the topic of cannabis. So I am a speech-language pathologist, and I'm also a co-owner to a dispensary called Lovely Leaf. We have been awarded conditionally by the state of New Jersey as a qualified social equity and diversely-owned business. And we're looking to apply in West Orange. We just, I just wanted to let the council know that I am applying, so please keep the doors open so that I can complete my application. I am a qualified microbusiness as well, and I'm looking to stay as a microbusiness for the foreseeable future if awarded a resolution for the town. I am planning to contract individuals from the town to support the town. For example, my attorney, Rogers Saruto, is from town. My security company is also from town, yeah, former, yeah, graduate from West Orange High School, Bob Semino. So I'm looking forward to collaborating with West Orange if given the opportunity.
Thank you. And sir, if you could just let us know who you are as well? Thank you.
Yes, my name is Steve, Stephen Shaiman, S-H-A-I-M-A-N. I live at 401 Wood Drive in Livingston, but I used to live at 242 St. Cloud Avenue, West Orange. And I'm a proud 1977 graduate of West Orange High, and I, I also graduated, Karen Scarpa, that's Sue Scarpa's younger sister. So, and I'm, I'm going to be the CPA for Lady Leaf. And I also just wanted to mention that Victoria has a lease, or she has an LOI for a lease on Prospect Avenue, and she spoke to Jim Abbott about it, and he seems to be comfortable with the location.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, Althea, we're going to ask you to speak into both mics, it was difficult to hear.
I will, because we can hardly hear back there, any of-
Yeah, take both mics, please. There we go.
And I use to have things close to my mouth.
Thank you.
I think that, that, that young man that spoke a few minutes ago, something should be done about that because I've heard many, many stories about people trying to open a restaurant or having a restaurant and had problems like this, and not because of them, but because of the system here. So the town should do something to help him. But at any rate, good afternoon.
My name is Althea Tweeden, I live at 15 Edgar Road. I'm a senior citizen. I came here today hoping that we will soon have a senior advisory board like other towns. I was a caregiver for my mother, who came to live with me from St. Louis after she had had a stroke in her 80s. She moved from St. Louis here to look for a senior service, a senior community center like she was used to in St. Louis, and they had them there. And it was great, she had a lot of fun, she met people, she was very active. After moving to New Jersey, we looked for a similar program here in West Orange. There were no programs like that here, none at all. So we eventually found the Daughters of Israel, and we were able to go there, and she was there for eight years, which she really enjoyed it, but they eventually canceled your senior program. So we had to look for somewhere else. We went to other cities, but she didn't kind of fit in. We did find one in Montclair, and she went there for a few years. Senior programs not only provide enrichment and support for seniors, but they also, they also have much-needed support for the caregiver. I was a caregiver for 10 years, and it was very difficult. And having a program for my mother gave me a chance to have three days a week, five days, five hours during the week to get my hair done, to do things for her, to do just personal things, and not go totally insane. So, my suggestion is, we have two locations in, in West Orange. We have Toby Katz, that could be open for our senior, seniors, and which it isn't totally now. I think you're going to, they have a few programs there. And also, like Bill Rutherford said, the Rock. We're paying taxes, we're paying for the Rock. Why not have it for seniors? Why can't seniors go there, like he said, and spend a day or two there? And they shouldn't have to pay because they're paying already through taxes, they're paying for the Rock. A senior advisory board would help give the money needed to provide for these programs. You would have, with a senior advisory board, you could have fundraisers, you could have grants, you could do activities that would bring money in to pay for those programs and activities. And so I'm asking that you really pull up your sleeves and work out getting a senior advisory board for West Orange. And like I said, we have the Rock, and we also have Toby Katz. You have two buildings right here now that we could use. And as Prince would say, let's, 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 let the seniors party like his 1999 in these facilities. Thank you.
You can have a seat on the front row, and just as soon as she's done, come on up.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know if you hear me well, if you don't, I'm going to speak with my own voice because it was very hard to hear. My name is Rosalie Doak Woods.
Oh, how do you do?
I live in 101 Warren Road in West Orange. I lived in town for 20, 21 years, and I worked in town for 23 years. I'm a student at West Orange High School. Some of you are my, were my students, and I'm excited here to come here. I'm really looking for the senior citizen advisory board and the senior citizen center. Why is that? Okay? When I, when I, I have my mother-in-law now live with me for the past two years, and she's a very active woman, but she doesn't drive no longer. When I was looking for a place at the restaurant, she was nothing about it for her. And she is so sad, she said, maybe I should go to a nursing home. I said, no, Mom, maybe there's something here. She used to live in Kenworth, and Kenworth, they have a center, a small little town, and they have activity there three times a week for them, they give a lunch to them for free. I love, I love when, uh, West Orange, just through the war, doing, we're doing the prom for the elderly here, for the citizens. Those are the things were done before. We can do so much in this town. When I see a population like us, you know, I'm getting old, I'm getting a sinus here very soon, where am I going? No place to go. I think it's time for us to start to consider the senior citizens. They are people important, as, you know, I'm saying, they are the people we can do intergenerational, we can put them together, they can help others. There is a center open there, we can look, we can bring the children together with the elderly, do different things, and the things that she experienced. I think it's time for you as a council, all of you, that you do something for the senior citizens. We need to wait no longer, there's no need to wait no longer. It's putting this together, have a give something for them. I suffered this now, I never thought I would do. When I thought of that, my mother-in-law said at home, want to go to the nursing home. I don't want this for her, but she say, oh, I still working, and I, but I don't have the time, you know, during the day, just few hours, just for them to make new friends. With the COVID, it's worse now because a lot of people always isolate, but we can move forth with this. So I hope you hear us here. I'm excited to see all some of you, you know, running, so, and I hope that this happens for us. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing? My name is Darnell Gibbs, 206 Tremont Avenue, Orange. So I like to say, good evening, everybody, West Orange residents and the council members here at West Orange. I like to introduce myself to people who don't know me. My name is Darnell Gibbs. I'm a United States Army Combat Veteran with 12-plus years of combat service. I'm also the Essex County Council Kids Deputy Director, a nonprofit youth organization designed to mentor at-risk children throughout the county. I've been part of this program for almost six years, okay? I wasn't fortunate enough to make the last meeting because I had a military assignment that required my attention, but my wife was interested to attend the meeting. I was also able to catch part of the meeting via, I think it was Facebook or Zoom or something like that. I was able to catch part of the meeting, she set it up for me ahead of time on my tablet. And I'm, I'm pretty much here for a little bit clarification because I'm a little confused. I've been tracking the West Orange process for the cannabis process since, you know, you guys started talking about it. Councilmember Two Brown was a big advocate for it, she pushed very hard for it, apologize about that. She pushed very hard for this legislation for West Orange. There was multiple times where it's put out that West Orange was going to give out four licenses for standard, and then there was no set number for microbusinesses. But I want to say for the last two, maybe three months, it's been like a reversal of what you advocated once before. Now it's sounding like you guys sort of want to put the whole process on hold. For a lot of people who don't know, I've been approved already through the state of New Jersey CRC. Multiple council members here on the board and other people throughout the town, they know how expensive and costly this process can be. I held the location that we've been renting out since April of this year, so I've been paying rent, public service bills, cable bill, insurance, for almost seven months now. I'm just really trying to find out exactly where I stand in this whole process. I know my location was a little questionable, some people didn't like the location, some people did like the location. We're in the process of, of trying to acquire a new location. This process is not easy by far. To find a location that's suitable as per the state requirements, and then also to find a landlord who's willing to let you operate in their location is extremely complicated. I started this process of looking for a location here in West Orange, December of 2021, okay? While I was away in Iraq. I told my wife, hey, let's start looking for locations in West Orange, all right? My daughter graduated from West Orange High School this year. I was able, to be able to return on time to attend the graduation. And literally, as we drove to, to the hockey stadium, Turtleback Zoo, literally, you guys, my wife, I wish she was here. I used to take, I was taking the detour to try to find additional locations. They're, they almost virtually don't exist. So what I'm trying to find out now is if the money that me and my family's already contributed to West Orange as far as rent, PSNG, and utilities, will we be given an opportunity to cure our location, I mean, cure our application with finding a new location? Will this application process be put on hold for microbusinesses such as myself and such as the young lady who spoke earlier before me? Once again, this is probably the only opportunity where a person who doesn't have millions and millions of dollars will actually be able to get into an industry and create generational wealth. This whole bill was built on the purposes of individuals such as myself, small business owners, to create generational wealth. I started my company, Paranatural Vibes, in 2019. I got introduced into cannabis in 2013 after I injured myself in Afghanistan. Volunteer my life to make sure everybody here could live the American dream. Now my American dream stands on the verge of being crushed. I just want to make sure everybody such as myself and every other microbusiness applicant get a fair shot. I don't have an abundance of money. Every dollar that I save, from when I joined the Army in 2008 until now, I've spent it. If money grew on the back of the tree, I wouldn't even be here, I wouldn't even have this conversation. I would just simply find something, build a building. I don't have that luxury, I don't have that option. I took out a loan just to start the process that I'm paying back, just to have a location since April. I got approved by the state for that location. Just to be told that location may not be it for you guys, because you guys don't like the location. Is it possible that you guys don't like the location because of like you guys building something farther down the street? It's possible, I'm not going to argue with you. I just want to be able to be heard. Last time I was here, I believe it was back in early August, late August, early September, I was told I was going to be talking, I was going to have an opportunity to talk to the Cannabis Task Force. Never happened. I did, I did three military assignments, okay? Came back. All I used to do is go home, check my email. Not here.
Your time is up.
Appreciate it, everybody have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Gibbs will respond after everyone has completed public comment.
Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Arshad Aziz.
Can you spell that, please?
Yeah, first name is Arshad, A-R-S-H-A-D. Last name is Aziz, A-Z-I-Z.
And where you live?
7 Cedar Avenue, West Orange. Cedar Avenue.
Cedar.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a cancer patient and almost about to be a senior citizen soon. And I was giving, I was taking care of my parents and they died a few years back and they were senior citizens. And, and they died in depression. And right now, I have the same situation. And I also teach art classes to disabled children at 49 Park Avenue, which is at the, which is across the main street and Park Avenue. And for some reason, I have to go to Maplewood and South Orange and Montclair just to enjoy the senior citizens facilities and which we don't have in our town. I wanted to start some kind of senior groups to do my hobbies, but for some reason, we don't have any place over here. The only place we have it, which is West Orange Art Council, but which is closed all week long. And if you want to do any activity over there, then you have to rent the space over there just to do any kind of hobbies. So that's, and I, I was not expecting anything from the town, but I saw Susan and she told me that there is a Kobe Katz Center where I can go. But I found out that, that that place is not really open for the senior citizens. So where I can do some kind of a healthy activities and which actually I'm doing it at my home. We have a few senior citizens which come to my house and then we chat and sip a cup of tea or coffee and do like a quilting and artwork and flower arrangement and indoor gardening and these type of activities. So if Kobe Katz Center is available, then I can have a larger senior citizen group where I can give my, give my, I can start some activities over there. Thanks.
Very nice.
Thank you, sir.
Susan Lencheck, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. First, thank you Councilman Rutherford and Councilwoman Matute Brown for recognizing the importance of preserving the property at the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue. My remarks this evening are mainly addressed to the remaining council members. Whether you call the property at the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue, the Ridge Road Property or the Mount Pleasant Forest, it is a 12.76 acre parcel that serves an important ecological and engineering function. It is in danger of being developed and that would severely and seriously compromise its ecological and engineering value. The application that was submitted to the planning board for developing this property includes the clear cutting, not of 72 trees as previously thought, but 525 trees plus many more trees proposed to be removed along a total of 780 feet of the easterly flowing drain lines. Based on the lot sizes proposed by the developer, the amount of forest to be clear cut amounts to a minimum of 10.73 acres of the 12.76 acre area. That is 84% of the forest, which would leave only 16% or less of the current forest cover to absorb rainwater. It was stated at the last meeting that development of the land would not stop the current runoff onto Mount Pleasant Avenue. It is true that there is runoff now and the town engineer once stated that much of the runoff in that area originates on the north side of the road. So developing, so, sorry. So developing the forest will not stop the current runoff, but with at least 84% of the tree cover removed from the forest, there would be an additional cascade of water onto a hazardous area of the road. At the last council meeting, it was again stated that there is a reluctance to purchase a property on a private road to preserve as open space. I asked a couple of questions at that meeting, which were not answered. One of those questions was, is Crestmont accessible from a public area? And if so, where is that public access point? When there was a tour of open space parcels three and a half years ago, the bus took us onto the Crestmont Country Club property to view that parcel. The country club is private, not public. Also at the last council meeting, there was a statement regarding preserved land indicating that there ought to be public use. What is the public use of the Crestmont property other than the alleged illegal hunting that may be occurring there? Instead of public use, wouldn't public benefit be a more appropriate criterion? Crestmont certainly has that benefit, being perched on a steep slope with residences downslope. The Mount Pleasant Forest would have the same benefit in its geographic position. The current balance in the Open Space Trust Fund is just under $1.2 million. This is a large percentage of the cost of the property. Councilman Rutherford stated that it might be possible to include at least some of the funds needed for the purchase of the forest and the grant application under infrastructure. This is worth pursuing. Isn't the purpose of the Open Space Trust Fund to preserve land that is in danger of development? And keeping it from development would have an ecological and public health benefit? And so for that reason, public funds are used to preserve the land. It doesn't seem to make sense to use public funds to purchase unbuildable land, which seems to have been done in some instances. All of you acknowledge the reality and the threat of climate change. It is our responsibility to address it as individuals and as a community. Addressing is not free and it is not cheap. It comes with a price, but the price of not doing our part to address it is even more costly and the consequence is more serious. Please reconsider and purchase and preserve the Mount Pleasant Forest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please use both, thank you.
My name is Corey Dishman. I reside on Llewellyn Avenue on West Orange, New Jersey. Good evening to all of the members of council. I know everybody knows me for cannabis, but I didn't come up here for that tonight. First off, let me thank you for your work. I know how diligent you guys do work and we appreciate that. Reason I'm up here tonight is because of several incidents that occurred within the past few weeks involving young men that have been murdered. I've spoken to East Orange mayor and council members. I've spoken to Orange law enforcement. I've spoken to chief a few times and expressed my concern about us having collaborative efforts between East Orange, Orange, and West Orange since we do share Main Street and Park Avenue. Other than for commerce purposes, I believe that it's time that we work together for these kids, to give them a chance. A lot of them don't have a traditional household to go home to. You know, we think that these kids are, are just kids and they don't have real problems, but anxiety and depression is at an all-time high. And I think that a lot of times we sweep things under the rug when it comes to the youth, but we don't know what they're going through right now. And my idea, I think we should come up with some type of safe haven that's open 24 hours a day. Of course, it can have recreational services, but more importantly, some wraparound services, therapy, mentoring, allowing the police to get in there and build rapport with these kids so they don't look at them in fear, but actually can respect them for what they do with regards to protecting and serve. I would get in there with you guys, raise funds, reach out to sponsors, figure out a way to do this, but our kids just need help, man. And that's all I wanted to say. So, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Good evening.
James, do you hear me? You hear me? James Jackson, 1 Ashley Road. So really quickly, I'll discuss cannabis really quickly. That's really not why I'm here this evening, but a number of people have, have brought it up and I know the trek to, to get a license is one that is, that is not for the faint of heart. I'm the CEO of Yerkana. I was fortunate enough to get a resolution here in town as a micro license to cultivate. I just want to say really quickly, I've been hearing rumors about pausing the process, about stopping the process. I would just say, you know, just keep in mind, you know, we heard the story of, of the gentleman in, in the back with Pure Natural Vibes. You know, this is his livelihood. This is a lot of, of folks' livelihood and they've put a lot into this. So I would just behoove the council as well as the Cannabis Task Force to be careful about, about how they end the process if you guys are choosing to pause or stop a process. And realize there are a number of businesses that are choosing West Orange as their home because West Orange did a great job of taking a step in the direction of progression that a lot of towns and cities in Essex County have not. And I, and I give you guys a lot of credit for that. But at the same token, there are a number of people who have started their process, who have not started their process, who are introducing themselves for the first time to the council here tonight. So, so I would just say, you know, be, 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 be mindful and be empathetic when thinking about how you are going about thinking about a pause or a stop in licensing. Frankly, my opinion would be there shouldn't be a stop to licensing considering the fact that we haven't even started this industry yet in West Orange. We don't know truly what direction everything is going to go in. But we do know you do have to have a certain amount of businesses specifically from a cannabis perspective to actually have a viable industry in town. That's, that's, that's all I want to say about cannabis tonight and just be empathetic and understand that people are putting a lot on the line to, to take that jump and to take that leap and, and to start a business here in West Orange that will bring tax revenue to town. The other thing that I want to speak about, I want to speak in support of my good friend, Garen Dixon, the owner of Harper's Cafe, and the things that he's dealing with, with, which tonight on his three-year anniversary, we should be somewhere celebrating and having a drink and not here fighting for the livelihood of his business, considering what he's brought to this town. I mean, we know, we don't have to speak common sense. We know that it's a joke that people could not think that he was cooking sandwiches in his establishment considering that he's provided this town with more than 5,000 sandwiches in town when people were in need during COVID and took his time and resources in order to do so. Not to mention that the negligence of, of, of the health board or whoever is in charge of, of doing his inspections, if that was missed three years in a row and now you just all of a sudden say he needs a hood, that can't be to his detriment as a small business owner. I could speak specifically about what Harper's Cafe means to me. It is somewhere that I drive past Dunkin' Donuts, past Starbucks to go to Harper's Cafe because I'll say what he can't say, which is it's the best coffee in Essex County, some of the best breakfast sandwiches in Essex County. It's a place that is flourishing and to his point, his business has brought up that area where he is. The things that he's done for this town, the notoriety that he's brought to this town, having a shout out in the New York Times and the things that he does as a successful business owner. I would say for myself, somebody that will be opening a cannabis business here in town, I hope to be able to have the success that he's had and be able to contribute to the town in the way that he's contributed. It's just really disappointing that we're sitting here having to have this conversation on his three-year anniversary rather than thinking about when we're going to celebrate him up here as a business owner that, that, that took his time, took his resources and as a resident chose to open a business here in town and really bet his chips and push his chips to the middle of the table on West Orange. You know, I would ask in the same way that he is, 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 you know, we have to protect small business owners, specifically black-owned businesses here in, here in West Orange. And he is a representation of what we want business owners to look like and how we want them to give back to our community. So in some way, shape or form, let's find a way to help him come to a resolution that doesn't cost him $15,000 in investing in a building that his slumlord may turn around and not renew his leasing. What we can't do is having business owners throwing money down the drain. We should be supporting them and allowing them to thrive as he's done. So that's what I ask this evening. I appreciate you all for your time and all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Joe Krikoviac, Grandview Avenue. I'm glad to hear a lot of the support for the seniors. I'm glad it's come up. I'm very sorry for the situation in Harper's Cafe. It's a great place. Definitely want to do what I can do to help besides just drink coffee. At the last council meeting, I noted that Public Access TV had not run a council meeting replay in what is now about eight or nine weeks. No one from the council or administration responded until a few minutes ago. Thank you, Mr. Fagan. I'll note that this is the preferred or sole access to meetings for many residents, especially seniors. I'm very disturbed to hear that a few weeks before the election, where people are highly interested in what's going on locally with their government, that we have this blackout and it's even indefinite. I would very much like to know how this happened. Very disappointing, again, for the seniors who rely on this for their information. Later in the meeting, the last meeting, Council President McCartney literally attacked me verbally with inaccurate information. I had advocated yet again for the council to purchase the environmentally sensitive, as we've heard, 12.7 acre Mount Pleasant Forest. It has more than 1,000 trees that hold back water and erosion from the neighborhood below, which includes Crest Ridge Apartments and the overlooking rock face similar to the one that collapsed last year and forced the evacuation of Ronjo Lynn Apartments. The council voted unanimously not to acquire that property this year, early this year, and refused to bring it back for another vote. Now the owner has filed to build four homes, cut down lots of trees, again, as we heard, and even includes a pipe to carry stormwater east downhill toward the apartments. There are no stormwater drains underground up there. It's all rock. This application was filed, filed in August with the planning board where Ms. McCartney is the council liaison. She didn't mention this application at subsequent council meetings, even as residents were speaking about it. I also criticized her for saying that she wouldn't buy, quote, privately owned property for open space. I pointed out most of all the property we've acquired in the last two decades was privately owned. Just want to remind you what she said. And if you want to track this, you can go to the last council meeting, 1 hour 23 minutes. Quote, "And I just wanted to wrap up with Joe Krikoviac's comment about appointing Susan Lencheck. I think that was an excellent choice. For you to have an appointment on the Open Space Commission," it's actually committee, "you talk about now that you're purchasing property." We had this conversation at our last meeting. I think you have voted no on every single acquisition that has come up, if not all, at least 90% of them. And anytime the Mount Pleasant Two Ridge Road, I'm going to call it, it's not Mount Pleasant Forest, it's Two Ridge Road and 10 Ridge Road came up, you were not present at those meetings. So now you are ready to purchase that. Again, I'm not going to use public funds or continue to bond to purchase property on a private road that the public does not have access to. Clearly, the public has access to it. We heard from Councilwoman Williams early this year that she and her daughter drove down that road. I want to set the record straight from the council president's comments at the last meeting. The Open Space and Recreation Committee Plan Update lists three properties that they recommended and acquired as open space while I was on the council. The council meeting minutes show that I voted for seven Belgrade Terrace and Wally Terrace. Wally Terrace, which by the way, has Wally Terrace, which, by the way, has no public access directly to the property. Also, by the way, the minutes show that you, Council President McCartney, voted for Belgrade Terrace, the property that adjoins your residence. You appeared to say at the last council meeting that you didn't vote for it because it was, quote, "before my time," end quote. It was in 2012, the 12th year you were on the council. The plan lists 577 Mount Pleasant, known as The Rock, purchased as 2011, but the original vote took place in 2010, before I joined the council. I did vote for the two revised agreements in 2011. So I voted for 100% of the potential acquisitions recommended by the Open Space Committee that I could. Rock Spring Club, as I recall, was not purchased with open space funds. Nope, we borrowed $12 million for that purchase. As the council liaison to the Open Space Committee, I helped lead the effort to unanimously recommend the purchase of the Mount Pleasant Forest in 2019.
Your time is up.
Thank you. I have, I would request to leave to finish my comments. The council and mayor ignored this and never scheduled a vote during my term. I was most certainly at the council meeting where you had the rest of the council voted down this proposed acquisition. You can check the video in the minutes. I spoke at public comment in favor of the purchase at the April 5 meeting. Council President, I urge you to make research, facts, and truth priorities before you speak in your remaining time on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, I'm sorry. Do you have?
Council President, we have several people as attendees in the Zoom audience. Anyone wishing to address the town council, please raise your hand now. You will have a maximum of five minutes to address the council. When your time is up, you will be informed by Madam Clerk that time has expired. If you don't see or not are familiar with the Raise Your Hand function, just move your mouse along the bottom of the screen, and it will pop up. Council President, we have Vivian Demas in the audience, and she's first up. Vivian, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Vivian Demas. I'm on Spring Hill Drive in West Orange, and I'm going to make it simple for you. While I don't always agree with Mr. Krikoviac--
Can you repeat your address, please?
Spring Hill Drive.
Thank you.
While I don't often agree with Mr. Krikoviac, I will second every single thing he said, particularly about the purchase of the land and the woman who spoke about the problems to be created by cutting down all those trees. And the number she gave was huge. I was upset about the original number that I looked at, but if her number is true, even more so. To me, what you are doing with that piece of property is absolutely reprehensible. If you cut down all those trees and affect the people around the property by changing the topography the way you planned to. We are seeing climate change. This is not climate change with what you're doing with that property. It is absolute malpractice for you to change that topography without protecting the lands around it. The lands apparently already have a problem. You cannot possibly rationally think that cutting down all those trees is not going to multiply that problem. So I'm going to stand by that. And the gentleman with the cafe, who I will be visiting very soon, if what he says is true, and for three years, West Orange let him continue as a business, and now are penalizing him for something he did not have that they should have seen from the beginning, shame on all of you. Shame on us as a town for doing this to an entrepreneur who is trying to make a living and has given to his community. I'm presuming everything he said is true. He donated to his community, his time, his resources, and you're now going to turn around and tell him that after three years, you're changing the rules for him because somebody in your departments screwed up when they inspected him? Shame on you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other member of the Zoom audience wishing to speak? Please raise your hand at this time. Council President, we have one more that just came in. Roz Balinski, please raise your, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Please speak up.
It's Roz Moskowitz-Belsky, 11 Wedgewood Drive. I am also the co-chair of the Pleasant Valley Civic Association, dedicated to the safety and beautification of the Pleasant Valley Way corridor. I am, we have, this is, this issue has come up in the PED Board over the years and has gone nowhere. And the issue that I'm going to talk about is getting the intersection of Pleasant Valley Way and Eagle Rock Avenue to 25 miles an hour. There are a stream of high school students and teachers that start at 10:30 in the morning. They're, they were, you know, there's a lot of, there's open lunch. This pedestrian traffic continues all, you know, right through the day until, you know, 4 o'clock. Every single municipality in Essex County at a major intersection is 25 miles an hour. So I implore you to come up with an ordinance, go into the county, and getting this down to a more reasonable 25 miles an hour. Right now, the signage is terrible. It's 30, and it's not even visible. So that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Roz.
Any other member of the Zoom audience wishing to speak? Please raise your hand at this time. Last call in the Zoom audience for public comment.
Good night and thank you.
Council President, I am seeing none.
Thank you, Joe. So we're going to close public comment. And I know our town attorney just walked out, but I know, Mr. Dixon, that he will speak to you, probably down the hall, in the conference room. Okay? So really, when you started speaking, what I wanted to say was that I thought we were here to celebrate your three-year anniversary, and all of that food that you were delivering or that you were making, I was delivering as a volunteer for the search team. So I thought it was going to be on a much happier note. We do appreciate your business and all of your community spirit here, and I'm hoping that this will get ironed out and worked out with our town attorney and the administration. And Mr. Jackson, thank you for your comments, too, in support of Mr. Dixon. Let's see. Well, let's start with senior services. So Ms. Scarpa and everyone that came in this evening about senior services, I truly appreciate your passion and your advocacy. And just in case, this book that I went out to get is chock-full of information, so I'm leaving it here for everyone to pick up. And really to thank you for all the comments that you made. I know my dad and your dad went to high school together. And for people that don't know, there are so many senior services and programs in place already between, we met Laura Van Dyke just a little while ago when she announced the domestic violence. She does wear many hats as our senior services coordinator and the social worker for the town. So between the senior services office and the recreation department, we have just activities and things, senior golf, the senior prom, the West Orange Women's Club just had the Paper Mill Playhouse. I think I love, Toby Katz is used for aerobics, yoga. There are so many programs, the town pool, senior picnic, intergenerational programs, you know, I have been doing as a business owner here in town. I would love to see that grow. The Toby Katz Center, you mentioned that it is underutilized. All of these ideas, we can come together. Laura is very accessible, and I just, I like the idea of having a town-wide survey to find out what programs, or even what more programs we can put in place. Laura and Noelia, they even started pickleball, the master gardeners up at Toby Katz. I just that there is so much already going on, and if we need to do more, then we can. Laura had her telephone number that was accessible, and she also had transportation that residents can, I'm just going to give out that number, 973-325-4134, if you do need a ride to any one of those activities. Mr. Azrouz, I know he does workshops at the West Orange Arts Council. It would be wonderful to set that up, either in Toby Katz or The Rock or whatever location that we think of. There's just a lot of ideas, and I know how receptive either the recreation department or senior services would be to implement even more program. So I just thank you, and if we need a survey, that there is something that you think we should install or implement, I know that everyone here would be receptive to those ideas. And Bingo, on Wednesday, is back. So a lot of the COVID restrictions that were in place, I understand about the mental health of all of our seniors, a lot of that has been lifted. And like I said, Bingo is back. And the community room, there is a lot of space at the Rent-A-House. We just had Althea's gone, but we had a 9:30 meeting this morning. We served together on the Board of Directors meeting, talking about even more program. So even the community room is large enough to host, if you wanted to do one of your fabric arts or any of the other suggestions that were made. You know, we just need to connect and call Laura's office and schedule a time and a date. Thank you. I am going to leave the task force. I did want to ask if the Cannabis Task Force is an open public meeting, and can people log on, and how would they know when they were scheduled to stay on top of the information? So that's a question that I have. And the 12.7 acres? Yeah, well, you know, I'm still struggling with that. I feel that the comments that were made about having 12 acres on a private road, my hesitation, though I do, I really do struggle with this, my hesitation is that you are asking us to use public funds to purchase property on a private road, and yes, you can walk down the street if you want, but it isn't, there is no use for the public. So that was the comment that I had made using, I am not in favor of using public funds on a private road. And the example would be, there was development on Ridgeway Avenue, six acres, there would have been six single-family homes that could have been built there. They were, the Open Space Commission did purchase that property to avoid that, and now we have a gazebo, a park, walking trails that everyone in town can use. So their public funds were used in a way for the public to use. There is no public space for the public to use on those 12 acres. And talking about the Planning Board, I know you keep saying that I'm the town liaison, that application has not been distributed. It was actually on tomorrow night, there's a Planning Board meeting, it was on the application, on the agenda, but it has been moved and carried over. I don't believe all the reports are in. You're getting the information about trees, we, that application has not been distributed. So no, I don't have that information. I don't know the number of trees because someone must have opened that, opened that to get that information. I don't have that. Cannabis questions? I think, you know, I think we were trying to move through that process, and listening to people that are through the process now, we need, we need an answer, really. We are, if you pause it, where does that leave you? So you're, yeah, where does that leave you? So your investment, you've gone so far, and I just want to say, where does that leave you? If we allow you to go on with the process, where does that leave you? So I don't have the answers for that. I don't serve on the task force, and I didn't know that if it was open to the public for people to weigh in and ask those kind of questions. I will leave that to my colleague. I hope I didn't miss anything. We are going to, any other one comments? We're going backwards. Councilwoman Williams?
All right. Good evening, West Orange. Thank you, Council President. And as always, thank you to those who took time out of their busy schedules to bring their commentary, concerns, questions to West Orange. So looking at and reviewing many of the comments that have been presented to each of us this evening, I am going to go to a recommendation that I presented, which is that we certainly, each of us are liaisons to several different boards and commissions, and that if we are not serving in those capacities, sometimes it's difficult for us to respond because we don't have the accurate information. So we've had a lot of information about seniors, we've had a lot of information this evening brought to us about cannabis. I don't serve on either of those advisory boards at this present time, so I'm going to leave that commentary to my council colleagues. We also talked about, and something that I do want to respond to, was a comment where my name was specifically invoked about driving down Ridge Road. Ridge Road, as we all know, someone contacted me specifically about the Ridge Road property, and I reminded them that it is a private road. You can go 100 feet onto Ridge Road. On the left side of that road, it says private property. There's no question there. It's signage. So for us to continue debating about whether or not Ridge Road is a privately-owned road, I think is just ridiculous. It's there, the signage is there. If it wasn't a private road, why would the sign be there? So there, this discussion about Ridge Road Forest, Mount Pleasant Forest, it's nonsense. It's nonsense. I just got here, y'all. I haven't even been here a good two years yet, and we're changing the name of an issue. Why? Because it's an election cycle? Because it's convenient? Yes, we all realize and understand that Ridge Road is a problem in our community. And yes, we all understand that we need to do something about it. But I also heard someone say something about another road this evening that is a county-owned road. And you know what we haven't had any conversations with? With any of the people who are making commentary? I haven't heard you come to a meeting and say, "I've been talking to the county." We need to work better with the county, which we do. We need to foster every relationship that will benefit the community and the residents of West Orange. But don't sit here every two weeks when we have a council meeting and chastise the people who have been duly elected to serve and make it look like we're the problem. We have very limited jurisdiction on a county road. We have to create and foster partnerships. It's not something we can do independently on our own. So this narrative that is being produced, let's work together with the county. Let's, let's set up a discussion with the county so that we can really get some resolutions instead of y'all coming up to us every two weeks and blaming us for something that we have very limited control over. Part of what I understood when I accepted this role and responsibility of being an elected official was that I was going to have to make sure people understood truth, not the narrative that each of us-- Not the narrative that each of us are pushing to our own benefit for factual information. And in one year and 10 months, what I understand about West Orange being a nonpartisan, at-large community is that we all have our own personal agenda. And if that personal agenda doesn't benefit the residents of West Orange, then I'm going to ask you to take a hard look, council colleagues, at your agenda. What are we doing here? What are we doing here? We're talking about business owners. I keep saying, we are a community of small businesses. Yes, absolutely. I am very concerned that after three years, we are now coming to a business owner, and I'm going to say it, a black business owner. And making him do things that we may or may not have been aware of. But at the end of the day, for him to have to come here to a council meeting as opposed to picking up the phone and talking to someone who is running our businesses, who is making sure our businesses are cared for, that's not acceptable. We don't have any big, big, huge box stores like they do in other communities that border us. So if we don't take care of our small business community, then what are we here for? Very disappointing. And absolutely, we will make sure when we leave this meeting and business opens tomorrow in West Orange Town Hall, that somebody is on task to help our residents. Cannabis. Yeah, we've done some things well. And yes, we've missed some opportunities. But you know what, guys? It's a new business industry. We're navigating this on our own. We didn't have a tremendous amount of supervision and guidance from the state of New Jersey. So in defense of my council colleagues, two of which sit on the cannabis task force, they're doing the best that they're, they can. They're not sitting here saying, none of us have. We've considered, we've had discussion. We don't know what is right and what is wrong. But we can certainly listen to the feedback that you all who are investing have provided to us. And one thing that I clearly hear is that there are some people who have been approved by the state that don't have approval from township of West Orange. And there are some people who've been approved by the township of West Orange who don't have approval from the state of New Jersey. So we've got an issue. And we've got to fix it. And we will do indeed that. We will fix it. This is a community that cares about people. I'm going to speak for Tammy Williams right now. I care about my home. I don't live here and pay taxes here. And even if I didn't pay taxes here, I live here. I'm invested here. My kids grew up here. So yes, every one of us wants to see the best of West Orange. So when you challenge us and you question our integrity and you question our motive, it is disingenuous for you. You all elected us. And if you didn't vote for one of the people who are sitting around here, somebody else did. And if your vote doesn't want to continue during the next cycle, that's your choice and exercise your right. But treat us with some kind of respect. Stop criticizing us unduly. Stop calling our names out individually. And if in the words of a two or three or four-year-old, just be kind. Just be kind. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. But you just brought to mind too, that one of the callers on Zoom talked about these partnership that we have. Only two meetings ago, we did talk, we did pass an ordinance to reduce the speed on Mount Pleasant Avenue. So I thank Roz for bringing that comment up again. And we will call the county, find out what we need to submit, which is exactly what I did two months ago. And we got that done right away. So Roz, thank you. We will look at Pleasant Valley Way and Eagle Rock Avenue. And I'm sorry I missed that before. And I did want to say, Corey Dishman too, about your collaborative efforts. We had a meeting a few weeks ago, a week ago, where we shared our grief at Holy Trinity Church and trying to put these pieces together to find the gaps and work on a collaborative effort. So thank you. And we will follow up with that. Councilwoman Rutherford?
Thank you, council president. So let me begin with Mr. Fagan. I was present at the Coffee with a Cop event at Dunkin' Donuts. And indeed, it was a fine event. I think the one thing I would add to his presentation is, I think West Orange was the first or one of the first to implement this mental health ride-along program with our police officers. That is a big part of it now. And then we also have mental health professionals that review calls that end up having a mental health component, and they make recommendations. Our program has gone so well that it has been expanded. And multiple municipalities around the state are implementing similar programs modeled after ours. And I think that's something that just doesn't get communicated well enough. Certainly, I didn't know how many municipalities throughout the state had been reaching out to our police department to gain the information and the insight they needed to implement a similar program in their town. So I do certainly salute Police Chief Jim Abbott and the West Orange Police Department and our mental health associates that partner with us to provide that program. It certainly is something to be proud of here in West Orange. Ms. Scarpa made a very impassioned plea regarding senior citizens, and it was personal. I certainly do understand that, having witnessed my parents care for my grandparents at the end of life too. I know how difficult that is. So for all of those that have raised senior issues, I want to say that you have an advocate here. I'm happy to bring, or at least look at what was done in 2017 and see how we can use that as a springboard to finally and formally implement a senior advisory board. Our council president made some commentary around that and certainly enumerated many programs that are available for seniors in town. And that is absolutely true. She also mentioned conducting a townwide survey. One of the things that I've seen in all of the surveys that I've read so far regarding West Orange, whether it's pedestrian safety or whatever the issue is, one thing we don't do is communicate well. So while there may be a plethora of programs for seniors, very few know all of them. It's very difficult to find out where they are and what they are and when they're happening. They don't typically happen at the same place. So there's no rhythm or pace to these, to these offerings. And that is certainly something that we can do better. I think, I think Toby Katz Center is a fine building. It's just underutilized. And there's no budget for it to incorporate a senior program. And again, I'll say, if we are serious about seniors, our budget should reflect that. So I am fully supportive of a senior advisory board. I am fully supportive of a senior center. And I think we need to figure out how to do that in a way that makes sense for us, given the difficult economy we are in right now and the challenges that we are expecting to face over the next few years. You know, it's nice to have a lot of things. We have to be very diligent in understanding how those things will affect our budget. If seniors are important, then they will certainly be reflected in the budget. But that also means we've got to be judicious with, with other areas. So we certainly invite those voices. We haven't done the capital budget yet. We're done with our budget for next year. But when we get back to budget season next year, we certainly do need advocates from the senior community to raise their voice. I just wanted to compliment Ms. Costa Sparks. She's since left, but she did a phenomenal job. You could tell that she was nervous when she started. But once she got into it, she was just fine. So thank you for addressing us tonight. I'm going to come back to Harper's Cafe. I'm going to end my comments there. With regard to the cannabis pause or stoppage, I'm interested in understanding from our task force chair, anyone else that has insight. I see Mr. Moon is here. Where we stand in that process? And some clarity on the number of licenses that we are actually going to issue in town or at least issue resolutions of support for. It was my understanding, as has been said from the podium, that when we first addressed this issue, we had, we were anticipating four or five licenses. And there was an unlimited number of micro licenses. Now, obviously, that poses a problem. In other jurisdictions, you've seen rampant licenses issued and the market collapsed. Many businesses went out of business because there was just too many. So obviously, we can't have an unlimited number. But we do need clarity on how many we're willing to accept. I think we should be clear about what parts of town and what saturation looks like for us in each of these parts of town that will have these businesses. And if that is something that can be done while the process continues, then great. If that's something that needs to be done while the process has halted, we need to communicate that to the licensees or those applicants that are looking to get a license here. So I'm happy to hear any feedback on that that you might offer at this time.
I'll directly address the cannabis licenses. At this moment, the council has issued five resolutions of local support. I want to note that all five, every single one of them has gone to a minority-owned business. Four, three of the five are women-owned businesses. Three are micro businesses. And two are full-on operations, full-size operations. The way that the order is to set up is there is a cap on four regular licensed operations. And as you accurately stated, an unlimited number of micro businesses. So there's no cap on that. But the reality is, at the end, we did that for a reason. One, because we did not know what the sort of, how many applications we were going to get, the quality of the applications we're going to get, the type of businesses we were going to get. I will tell you this, and I think I've spoken to this many times before. The concern was always that we were going to get large, out-of-state operators coming in and trying to monopolize the number of licenses. So that's why we didn't keep a cap on the micro businesses. Now, we've, what I, in my opinion, has become a good problem, but still a problem, is that the caliber of licenses, the applications we're getting are a lot of small businesses, minority-owned businesses, and quite frankly, really good candidates. But at the end of the day, how many businesses, cannabis businesses, should there be in town? What is the maximum number? These are not things that we actually set in ordinance. These are things that we sort of left to the deference of both cannabis task force and this governing body. So, well, I don't want to get, and I want to address one of council, council president Susan McCarthys. So the meetings that are going on right now, they're not open to the public because we're actually evaluating specific applications. There's discussions about financials. There's discussion about security measures. There's discussion about some proprietary information that quite frankly, is not fair to broadcast to the public about what specifically these businesses are proposing and how they plan on operating. While I, while not getting into specific applications, there have been certain principles that have been expressed and concerns expressed by members of the task force that I think have gone into sort of the way that they've been operating. So for example, one of the, probably the biggest, again, all the applications have been from, a lot of residents have come. But there's been concern about having multiple cannabis retail businesses in proximity of each other. The idea that they're going to cannibalize each other. We don't want to create sort of a concentration of cannabis businesses in one area. So that has been a consideration. But one of the things that we've been doing is that instead of, well, so if you recall, early on, we basically moved really fast because we wanted to get resolutions out right when the application process with the state opened. If you recall, I was on the Zoom. I was saying, guys, we want to put them in the best chance possible to succeed. So we put out, we advertised, we got proposals, we got applications in, and we moved the process along. And the first batch got in there and they've been moving along the process. And from what I'm understanding, I think most of, a lot of them are doing pretty far along the process. But the problem is that we're still taking the applications in. And there's going to be a certain point where there's no firm number of like, how many we're going to keep going to. And part of the concern is, we don't know, we don't know how this is going to work just yet. Because there hasn't been, we're still really early in the process. And right now, we have five. We don't know what number, what the right number is. And quite frankly, that's what we're dealing with. And there's, again, part of the purpose of creating the task force was to have members, residents of the West Orange community who are representing the members of the community saying, hey, these are our concerns. We don't want them to be, you know, within 200 feet of a school. That's why the ordinance was amended to have that. We don't want multiple cannabis in the same area. And these are things that are concerns that were expressed by members of the task force. And again, there have been a lot of, there have been a lot of, there have been certain applications that we have not moved on specifically because while there were problems with the location, we are hoping that rather than saying no and shutting down the process completely for these applicants, they will hear about the concerns about the location based on, for example, another licensed retail business set to move there, that they will be, they will have an opportunity to find new locations to cure their application that's still pending so that they can move forward and have a better likelihood of getting support from both the task force and the council members.
So Mark, on the one hand, you're, we're encouraging businesses. But as a business owner, they are making these investments. They are spending a lot of money on these applications. Yet, they are still facing this abyss.
Sure. And the other alternative is basically, we have to start telling a lot of people no. And we did that early on. Flat out, saying, nope, we're not accepting your application. That's the other option. Or we can kind of say, hey, your application is still pending. There's some issues that the task force and this council may have with the location. So if you find something that's a little bit more suited or better, we can keep your hopes of having this business alive.
I think our inventory is so low also.
How does the council then say no?
I'm sorry. How does the council then say no if we're not aware that an application has been presented?
So with general, as you, as you know, I prepare the evaluation reports. It's something where I basically, once the task force has made a recommendation as to specific applications, I draft a specific report, whether recommending that the resolution be adopted or not to be adopted. And I present it to you guys with a resolution acting as such.
So I'm going to be very transparent because I've communicated my concern both to our council president as well as to our business administrator. And what my concern is, is that we're telling people no. And the governing body, if they come back to us as the governing body, I may or may not know anything about it. And so usually, in a situation where we have a task force or we have a planning board or a board that has that type of authority, quasi-judicial authority. Because the task force is actually telling people, no, you cannot open a business here. And I, and I, and I just have some concern with that because, again, it's not that the task force should not have the opportunity to vet it. And I think they should, just like a planning board or a zoning board. I just have some concern that I never heard about it. And that's the only thing I'm saying. Even if you guys say no, and that's fine. I still think it should come before the governing body. And the governing body should be able to say, we're going to agree with the task force because they vetted this. And we approve their recommendation. So that's my only concern.
Could I, I just want to jump in there for a sec, Mark, if I can? Thank you. So I want to point out for the public too that may be hearing this for the first time. On the website, westorange.org, there is a cannabis advisory group tab. And you can find all of the evaluation reports that Mr. Moon just talked about. But for the council, a couple of things. That this, this council has ordained by ordinance that we are not going to that we are not going to accept. So, an application that comes in at 100 feet from a school, this council, by that ordinance that we adopted after discussion, we're not going to bring that to you because we know that we already said no to that. So, to Mark's point, that's really why there is a no to an application that may come in at 100 feet. But also, in the evaluation reports, so the ones that we have said no to, we have brought to the council by way of the evaluation report. So, in the first initial slew of applications that we received, there were 10 in total, we supported four, one we rescinded, but in that evaluation report is also the other businesses that were not approved and the reasons why we recommended, because we can't approve as a task force, as an advisory force, but we've recommended to the council whether to approve, and then those that we weren't recommending, we also gave to the council to say, this is why we're not recommending. So at the end of the day, you know, the council does ultimately, as the governing body, make that decision, but those evaluation reports are included. So, the only time this council will not receive information on it is, like I said, if it's completely out of the, that doesn't fit in our ordinance. It's a waste of time for me to bring it to you.
Mr. Moon, you said a moment ago that, and I accept your answer, that, you know, rather than tell some of these applicants no who have an opportunity to cure, that you leave it pending. When I listened to Mr. Gibbs in his presentation at the podium tonight, he communicated that there's some miscommunication at the very least, excuse me, that he's not been afforded an opportunity to cure, unless I heard him wrong, and that he's not even had an opportunity to speak. The notes that I took while he was speaking said, he was told that he would have an opportunity to speak with the cannabis task force. And has that happened?
Mr. Moon, I'll respond as the chair, thank you. So, it has not happened yet. His is one of the two pending applications before, well, now, one pending application before the task force. So, there was a conversation, and this is some councilwoman, Michelle Castellino, and I, and the rest of the task force have discussed, is the probability that, and the task force has agreed, that we should hold, play some moratorium, not because we don't want to support businesses, but simply because, A, the inventory is limited, and we don't want to hold them up here if they can find a place somewhere else. So, Pure Vibes is in a waiting stance because we also have to understand that we have already given five licenses, five, I'm sorry, five resolutions to support. Three are still pending with the state, we don't know what's going to happen with them. But Mr. Gibbs was not, well, when he was, he was not here the last time, his wife came to the council meeting the last time, and it was still a discussion amongst the task force as to how we were going to proceed, and the task force decided that they're going to listen to what we have already received and let the council decide upon recommendation to put a moratorium with a date certain so that we're not just saying, here's a resolution, we're not taking applications tomorrow. Because there are people that are in the pipelines, and we don't want to take that opportunity away from them. So, you know, at this point, it is a discussion that, you know, it's still public comment. I'm sure we were going to have this discussion during new business. So, I think that that is a better place to have this discussion so that we can move through the agenda and discuss another new business. But to answer your question directly, and to Mr. Gibbs, the task force is very excited about your application. It's not that we don't want to proceed with it, it's just that we, A, needed a quorum a few times, that failed? Go ahead.
I don't, I recommend not talking openly about any application.
Sure.
And in addition, with all due respect, I don't feel appropriate to talk about one specific application. But I'll speak in generalities that if, if an applicant has not heard an, you've seen every single, every single application that's come in has been included in one of the evaluation reports, every single one. So you've either been able to accept the recommendations or regent. Now, if there is, if there is, if there is a pending application that hasn't been heard yet, or hasn't moved forward yet, it's for a specific reason. And it's maybe it's for, maybe it's for, we're hoping that location might change. Maybe we're hoping for a number of other reasons. But instead of saying, no, we're not going to recommend it because we think that they're a good candidate, we think they're qualified, that they're good citizens and would make good business owners of West Orange, rather than flat out telling them, no, your process is over and you're being shut down, we're leaving, we're leaving the door open for the chance for that applicant hypothetically.
But are you communicating?
So, excuse me, excuse me. One of the problems is, I don't think it's appropriate to start picking specific applicants and saying, hey, by the way, this is a specific thing we want to do. But rather, we think that while there are members of the task force that are free to communicate with them, but officially, while, while members of the task force who are citizens can, can, can speak to whoever they want to, I don't think that the task force can officially sort of directly guide an applicant through a process.
So I don't think, I don't think, I think there's a false choice being presented in your argument, Mr. Moon. It's not just tell them no or leave it open, it's also if you leave it open, how you leave it open. Mr. Gibbs deserves some commentary, some communication from the task force telling him where he is and when he can expect a response. And for him not to know when he can address the task force, for him, and I'm, I have a different role than you, you know, I'm a councilman, I'm not an attorney. So I'm going to respond to the residents that come to this podium and pose a question to me, and I'm going to answer their question even if it's directly involving their business, you may not, and that's fine. But when Mr. Gibbs comes to the podium and says, I haven't been able, I haven't been afforded the opportunity to speak with the task force that I have been promised, to me, that's a problem. And I've sat here and listened to multiple complaints, and these complaints get at the heart of, well, the heart of what they're getting at is transparency and fairness. There's a perception by some, right or wrong, that this process is opaque, which makes them feel like it's not fair. And that needs to be clarified. So if Mr. Gibbs or anyone else is in a pending status, they should know, they should be communicated with what they need to do, or if they need to do something, or if they can't do anything, but they need communication from us regarding where they are, especially when you hear his presentation regarding the level of commitment he's made to West Orange for this particular business.
So I would like to just, if my colleagues don't mind, continue this conversation because, because it was public comment that sparked this conversation, as I agree, it should be later in the evening, but in fairness that they're all here now, let's just finish this, and then we could go back to finish up the rest of your comments.
I was just talking about the council discussion on the moratorium, that's all.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, here's the problem, and I've sat in this task force, and most of you know in the audience, I, you know, and the reason for that is because I'm the lone person that was not supportive of this, I didn't vote for it in the state for multiple reasons. I'm disappointed with the state and their guidance with us, mainly because look at where we're at now. We were under the impression that the process was that the task force would issue a letter of support, and then the applicant would go to the state. Now we have applicants that are approved by the state who did not pass through us, and it's ridiculous. And, and you folks, I feel bad for you. You're, you're, you're business owners, you invested, and you're expecting us because we're one of the few towns around that has approved this, all of you think you could come here. And, and, you know, and I'm not going to make an apology, I mean, I am because I feel bad, you think that, but we have a process and we have a limit. I mean, I was hoping we would only approve one in the community. There's other issues, I know, I know, but, but that's how I feel, so, but again, I didn't. I, I'm looking at this and I'm working with the process, and it's, it's been tough, but, but here's the thing, as you folks sit here, there's a lot of folks in town that are not supportive of this. I have a lot of parents that are upset with it. We, we have folks that, you know, are in Dunkin' Donuts, and we have our teenagers vaping marijuana in Dunkin' Donuts at lunchtime. So, you know, as much as we're trying to work with this and vet this out, there's, you know, and, and, yeah, I, I know it's frustrating for business owners to hear that, but that's the reality of the situation. And so we have to deal with all this as it comes to us. So the state really messed this up by going ahead and approving folks that did not get our letter of support, and now we're in a situation. So we approved four, we, we gave five letters of support, there may be an action coming forward and, and whatnot, I don't know what to say and not to say with Mr. Moon here, but I'll let him do this.
Say less.
Yeah, say less, say less is best. But at the end of the day, I, I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, I, I am in support of, of stopping the application process because, for your sake, I don't want to make you feel, now my colleagues may differ from me, and that's a conversation maybe later, to waste your, your time here. So, this has really been frustrating for you, and I totally understand it, and I totally get it, but it's been frustrating for us as well because we have to deal with everything within the community as we move forward with this, with this business and this process. So, again, again, I'll leave it to Mr. Moon, I'll stop talking, but I, I think we need not to, I feel like we're misleading the investors, and not purposely, and not, not that it's anyone's fault other than the state's fault.
So, Councilwoman, I, I agree with you that the state has been, they could have done a much better job communicating with regard to the rules, the law, and what's expected and the process, and, and I, and I certainly do agree with that. I do think, though, we have an obligation and a responsibility to those that are trying to locate their business here, to communicate better with them, and that is my sole recommendation with regard to Mr. Gibbs. We don't want to give him false hope, we don't want to give anyone false hope. So we want them to understand where they are in the process. I want to clarify something the incomparable Althea Tweeton said earlier. She spoke about using the Rocks facilities for senior events as well as the Toby Katz Center, and I do support that. I think not opening the pool there was a mistake, a missed opportunity, and we certainly could have had seniors there, or our special needs community, or other groups in town at that smaller facility since we now own it. But with regard to meeting space, that's a little bit different because that is in a business, so we'd have to figure that out. But the pool, for sure, I thought was a missed opportunity. Mr. Aziz, I certainly appreciate your commentary, and I would love to stay in touch with you because you seem like an excellent person to help organize programming if we are fortunate enough to open Toby Katz more fully, specifically for seniors. So before you go, or at any time at your convenience, please send me an email with your contact information so we can stay in touch. Ms. Levchik, again, I, I fully support the Mount Pleasant for purchasing, the Mount Pleasant Forest, and I wish Mr. Gross was here, would like to know if we've pursued any federal money to help preserve that. I see he's not here, so I will follow up with him myself and see where we stand in that, in that regard. I don't believe Crestmont is publicly accessible, and it may not have a public use as of yet, but it does have a public purpose. It certainly does preserve all of the, you know, a tremendous amount of, or prevent a tremendous amount of water from rolling down that hill and flooding the neighborhoods below it. Mr. Dishman, I want to thank you for your commentary. Pastor Adams and I are working on a structure to bring folks together to provide some additional supports for the communities most affected by violence. It is certainly a tragedy what happened, and it cannot go unaddressed, and it, and it will not go unaddressed. You know, I find Mr. Krokoviac's questioning around the public access channel very interesting. So I too would like to know how this happened. Was this, was this blackout scheduled previously? Was this transition from analog to digital a part of a plan that was articulated prior to now? There's so many things that are happening that appear to be part of election year politics. I would really hope that that's not one of them. I want to thank Ms. Moskowitz-Belsky for her commentary regarding the intersection at Pleasant Valley Way and Eagle Rock Avenue. No one pays attention to the speed limit on that stretch now, so I don't know what we can do to help control traffic there. But routinely, people, it's a four-lane road, so routinely, people speed along that stretch of road, and certainly do try to catch the light and speed up in, in, in an effort to do so. So I don't know if there's something that we can do aside from changing the signage, but maybe with speed enforcement along that corridor. All right, last thing on Mount Pleasant Forest, and then I'll address Mr. Garen's Business Harpers Cafe. Council President said that there's no use for the public for that space. I visited that space also with a few volunteers, some from our Green West Orange and some from the high school, and it does actually have a public use. There is a possibility to use that space to help strengthen our public schools. The carriage house that is located on the property has historic value, and it's an opportunity for the schools or the students to explore botany and other earth sciences actually working in the forest. And I think having a facility like that, and they're, you know, they quoted all kinds of different facts to me that I cannot recall right now, about the number and types of different, you know, insects or birds or whatever, I think having that type of facility could certainly strengthen our schools, and I think we need to do everything we can to strengthen them. So, again, I do encourage our BA and CFO and our mayor to apply for federal funding. There's money in the Inflation Reduction Act to fight climate change, and there's money in the infrastructure bill to fight climate change, and those are two excellent areas where we could apply for money for Mount Pleasant Forest. All right, with regard to Harper's Cafe, I want to say a few things about that. I share your concerns, Mr., I'm sorry, I, I, let me get your last name, Dixon. I, I know Mr. Dixon as G. from Harper's Cafe. So I do share your concerns. I sat through, and to the chief's credit, sat through a meeting with Mr. Dixon, chief, our fire chief, and our health director, and it still leaves some questions. I understand that there is some time to cure, but the cure that's being required or requested of Mr. Dixon at Harper's Cafe doesn't seem to match the issue. And from what I gather from speaking with other fire officials in other towns, and again, that doesn't mean they're right and ours is wrong, or ours is right and theirs is wrong, I do gather that it is possible to miss something in an inspection. So while that is possible, we had a pre-opening inspection, we had an annual inspection for at least three years, and to miss it that many times is, is an issue. Like, that's not something that should be missed that many times, once, maybe twice, but after three, it is now a pattern. And then, the type of cooking that's done there does not seem to warrant the amount of investment required to meet the, this particular remedy that's being proposed. So I don't know what we can do, but I know we need to do something. And again, this gets back to an issue that I raised earlier with regard to cannabis. There are some that feel like the process is opaque, the process is not fair, and that is something we really need to address. We want residents, our business owners, our investment community to have confidence in us, in how we govern, in what we do, and we're not always going to be able to agree. Sometimes they're going to... Sometimes they're going to, it's not going to fall in their favor. But we'll have a better time dealing with that when it doesn't fall in their favor if they trust that the process is fair. And so I really want to deal with that, and I don't know exactly how best to do it. I am grateful that you've been willing to meet with Mr. Dixon and others, but I do think that more work needs to be done there, specifically with regard to Harper's Cafe. They are a community staple. That neighborhood loves them. Other neighborhoods love them. People walk there. They sit outside and eat. It is a community space in every sense of the word, and people from every stripe in West Orange frequent that establishment. And he's demonstrated his love and commitment to West Orange, so I think we need to do something to help him, and I'm willing to do whatever we can. Now, I know Mr. Kaiser wanted to respond earlier. I'm happy to hear your response.
Well, I just, I spoke with Garen while you folks were answering questions, and I'm going to meet with him tomorrow and try to meet with the health director and with the fire chief and so forth, and try to find out as much as I can. I feel for him. I would like to help, so.
Mr. Kaiser, would you speak closer to the microphone, please?
I don't think I get any closer than this.
We're having a problem with the audio pickup.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
Well, I want to thank you, Mr. Kaiser, for your willingness to get involved in the process, and I'm looking forward to an amicable solution. I think, I think that's it for me. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Matu Brown.
I am going to try to make this as quickly as I can since it is 9 o'clock, 9:08 to be exact, and we have not even started with our council agenda. Senior Advisory Board, I've always supported. I really don't understand the reluctance. It's an advisory board. Certainly would support that. Mount Pleasant, everyone understands that I am supportive of that acquisition, and with respect to public use or access, I mean, the tree canopies provide us oxygen, and I don't know about everyone else, but I need it to breathe. So I am completely supportive of it. Roz, thank you for your comment on the Eagle Rock and Pleasant Valley Way. I will just take a look at the ordinance that Council President mentioned with regard to the speed reduction and share that with you as well. With respect to the unfortunate circumstance of the shooting on Watson Avenue, unfortunately, it is something that is very alarming. I know that there is still a pending investigation. I did speak to the school board. I did attend the meeting that Council President mentioned. I do believe that the collaboration has to include a school district because they know, and teachers in classrooms know so much more, when it happens, before it happens, how it's going to happen. It's a vital part of that conversation, and I spoke to Mr. Hayden Moore and our new principal Guerrero over at the high school on Friday. So look forward to that collaboration as well. With respect to Harper's Cafe, Mr. Garen, that day that I came, and I'll be perfectly transparent, it's my favorite place to get avocado toast. If you have not had it, yes, the coffee is delicious, but the avocado toast is amazing. On that same day, I did contact the chief of Fire Department, Chief Vecchio, as well as our health director, Michael Ponzino. We had a conversation, and I, it is my understanding that they are really willing to work with you. Obviously, there have been some missteps along the way in that process, but, you know, I was certainly outraged with the violation that you were issued, and, you know, they said it's a matter of process. I don't anticipate that they will enforce that. I hope that they will not at the cost that was quoted to you. But you have everyone's attention. Everyone is speaking and advocating on your behalf. That day I went into your establishment, I went outside and called him right away, as you know. So rest assured that your issue will be taken up with due diligence. And I really am concerned about the Slumlord situation. Certainly, we'll have an offline conversation about that. We do have a rent leveling control board here in town where you can take your issues to as well. And the last thing I will say about the task force, the cannabis task force, we've already discussed that, but I want the public to understand that the task force is an advisory board. This governing body created that ordinance. They approved the ordinance. The process is open to the public. Council President, you have been on that meeting. Several of you have joined the public meeting. The only time the meetings are not public is, like Mr. Moon said, to protect all of your intellectual properties. That's the only time we don't have a public meeting. And as far as not communicating, I see the emails that go back and forth between the chief because he answers them all, but I also know that he has been in conversations with Mrs. Gibbs. I know that you weren't available, but there have been conversations. I know you didn't hear directly from us, but the chief does sit on our task force, and those conversations have been ongoing. So I don't think that it's a matter of a lack of communication, and the state, the state from the very beginning set up that process. You can come here and get your license, and then you've got to hustle, and they give you 100 and, what, 20 days to go find a location, and that's where your frustration is coming from, and I completely understand it. But we also have a process. We have a two-part process where the advisory board does review your application. It'll come to the council. They approve or not. And then when you go to the state, you get your application. You have to come back to the council, to the task force, and then the council for your actual license, because that process is just taking a deeper dive to make sure that, you know, your SOPs and, you know, everything that you need to have to be able to open is compliant with what we are looking for. But, you know, for the public, I do not want you to think that this task force that is made up of volunteers, residents, neighbors of yours are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, and that we are not doing what we're supposed to be doing. It's a process. There is sometimes that it takes a while, but we are in communication. I know, Mr. Gibbs, that the chief has been in communication and email and conversations as well. So to my council colleagues, I just want to let you know that that is not the situation. The situation is that the chief is on that call, and we'll discuss the rest of the moratorium if that is to happen during New Business. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Catalina.
Thank you. Okay, a lot to unpack this evening. Mr. Dixon, I'm going to start with you, and I'm going to thank Mr. Kaiser. You know, I'm not going to belabor this, but, you know, my apologies on behalf of the township. I, you know, whatever miscommunications there were, or I have a feeling there's been changes, people retiring, and you just got snagged in some of that. So hopefully, they'll be able to resolve that, and it looks like everybody is willing to. Because, you know, you were there, as Council President said earlier, you know, I was out there too when you were doing those sandwiches and delivering, when everybody else, you know, was home in their pajamas. You came out, and you were cooking away, and we appreciated that so much. I know Ms. Brill is always on hand to help, even though, and it's unfortunate because we keep talking about expanding the services of the Alliance down to the corridor to the end of Valley Road. And, you know, hopefully, if, you know, someday we could do that, those kind of situations of miscommunication wouldn't happen for you. But, you know, I feel, we feel for you, and I'm sure it will be cleared up. But sorry you have to go through the pain right now. Mr. Dishman, we had spoken time and time again, and thank you for your concern and your community support. And in fairness, you know, to the business owners, I felt bad because I got a little emotional before, but I know you, part of becoming a business owner, selling the cannabis or cultivating, part of it is the community outreach and the education. And I know all who we've spoken to so far has been very, very supportive of that. And I know, Mr. Dishman, you had some great ideas and support your all parents, and, you know, we have to educate not only just the students, but also adults on usage. So I appreciate your support for that, and I apologize if I got a little emotional before, but this is just so frustrating. Again, I feel for all of you as business owners. It's beyond frustrating. Senior Services, Ms. Corpa, thank you for your shout-out. I appreciate you recognizing. But again, it's easy, you know, coming, my upbringing, you know, my grandparents living with us and having to take care of them, and both, with both grandparents, grandmothers having Alzheimer's, we know. And even, and even not so much as very difficult in the elderly stage, but, you know, folks that are 55 and older, we have our program, Aging Well, West Orange. We've secured that through a grant with Partners with Health, which we were able to roll out to the community the past few years, and it's been wonderful. And again, we were really on a roll. After we received that grant and programs, Council President put out the book there, you know, always, we were on a really great roll. Toby Katz Civic Center, we had received grant money to have, I don't want to say, exercise equipment, outdoor exercise equipment by the Community Garden and other program. Prior to the pandemic, you know, we were utilizing Toby Katz Center all the time, and there was hours, regular hours, and we're trying to get back on track with that. So between the pandemic and intergenerational programming has been phenomenal here in the township. But again, it's been put on pause because with COVID, we have our elderly community with our young community and with COVID. So we're seeing that aftermath with a lot of our programs. But because of the pandemic and all our needs with mental health, and we didn't mention it tonight, but I want to thank our colleague, Councilwoman Williams, for having her run last week to bring notoriety to that. So very important that we continue these programs. But the good news is, you know, we are building a new site. We are renovating Executive Drive into a new site for our West Orange Library that will have a lot of community space, that we could have more community programming. And now, after that, the site moves up. I believe April 1st is the deadline up there to get the site moved. We're going to have 65 affordable senior housing luxury apartments for our seniors to live in, with 7,500 square feet, which, you know, we debate whether it becomes a satellite library, whether, but there is no debate. It will be community space. And with the rent a house next door and working with the developer and park, park potlets, as Ms. Brill has called them, so many exciting things and so many exciting projects and trying to secure them, whether it's through the grants that we keep writing with our grant writing, or, yes, we do have to sit down and nail down our capital budget. You know, these are all exciting things for the township as we move forward. So everything's there. The mechanisms are in place, and an advisory board, you know, that was up to the mayor. He didn't, you know, he didn't want to move forward for his reasons at the time. And one of the biggest reasons at the time, if we all should remember, is that we didn't have enough personnel with the senior citizen department. At the time, God bless our former director, Ms. Patty Duffy, and God bless her. We lost her this summer to cancer, and we always feel for her family. And she did a wonderful job with her seniors, and she did not have many staff members. And now we have a whole team of staff members, and we talked about Susan Iavino retiring this evening, and she was great support with all of that and helping Ms. Duffy in the beginning. So we've grown. We have the personnel. And so, yeah, we will do that outreach. But in the meantime, Ms. Perez, Noelia Perez, who works with Ms. Van Dyke, they've been out there at our, at our street fair. They've been out at every single Downtown Thursday. So they've been out, having such great outreach at our senior citizen events.
Just don't forget Dorothy Sanders.
Huh? And Dorothy Sanders, I'm sorry. I knew, that's why I was, I was, thank you, Councilwoman. I cannot forget Dorothy Sanders for all the help she did as well. So, I mean, it's just been great. We have supports now, and that's what we were lacking. So, you know, if we have an advisory board now, it won't be so cumbersome on the staff. And that's where, why the mayor wasn't supportive of it back then, because it would have been cumbersome on the staff. So we're in a different space now. The pandemic, you know, we're moving from that. The students can now be with seniors once again safely. So, you know, a lot will change, and we look forward to that. And we appreciate, we also appreciate, you know, all your support that you have done with our senior community. So we thank you for that. So, you know, again, exciting times. I could talk for another hour, but I won't because we got to get out of here. And let's see, last but not least, again, I, at this time, I'm not in support of the Ridge Road property, mainly because right now I feel it's not in danger of being developed. Yes, there's an application that will be moved forward by the property owner. And again, if I was a property owner, I would try anything because I feel for this property owner. You know, they've been wanting to sell this property since I got here in 2015. Developers come along. They know it's a hard ask, the property, you know, there's challenges with that property. It's bedrock. It's built on bedrock. So all these plans, I'm not getting excited yet. So when the conversation comes to that is in true danger of it being developed, you know, I may change my mind. But right now, I don't feel that's there. Just because an application is coming forward, that doesn't mean it's, it will be built. Last but not least, Mr. Fagan, thank you. You've been very busy and active with all that you've been doing. And to our police department, I just want to mention, we talked about, you know, West Orange, you know, and with the chief and his staff and our great department, you know, moving times forward and other communities looking at us, what we're doing. This isn't the first time for us. A community service unit that came into place, how long ago, chief? 20 years ago? 15, 20 years ago when we first started? We were one of the first communities to have that, to have community policing, where our residents, especially our young residents, could come into the substation and have an officer to talk to and to look up to. And again, the active shooter drills, which are horrifying and horrible, and again, with Officer Sergeant Morello who had retired, the rest of the state looked towards us for those as well because we were leading the pack there. So glad to hear that we keep moving this forward, but not glad to hear of all the shootings that are out there now. And just last note, I apologize just to go back to senior services for all that you are out here. We have a newsletter. There is communication. However, you have to sign up for it. So contact Ms. Van Dyke on the website, the newsletter, the app, everything's on. So we're doing everything we can to improve our communications, and we look forward to you enjoying our programming. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Catalina. Before we move on, I just wanted to read this email that Joe Fagan just sent to me, just to clarify the, thank you, Joe, to clarify the TV 36 and TV 45 question. This is from Lauren Graffteza at the high school. She runs the studio, the media specialist there at the LMC. Says, going forward, if anyone has any questions, please call the high school, the LMC, the media specialist. As for the station being down, unfortunately, we don't have a date yet on when it can get back on. We are in the midst of acquiring a new system since ours was at the end of its life, and we can no longer fix or maintain it. Due to material shortages and elongated shipping times with the company, we are at its mercy. This has been going on for months now, but as soon as it is remedied, we will get the station back up and running. And her number is 973-669-3501, extension 31535, if you have any questions.
And Council President, if anyone needs that number, please have them, please email me, jfagan@westorange.org, and I'd be glad to give you that number.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. All right, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we're going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, September 20th, public meeting, and executive session minutes of 9:00, 6:22, and 9:20, 22. minutes of 9:06:22 and 9:20:22.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
I do not have one. I am glad to see the rent leveling board resolution on here so that we can move that appeal forward. Anyone have any questions?
I just have a quick statement. I do want to thank on 261-22, Resolution Authorizing Agreement, P S Z, Believe Foundation, participate in and benefit from the mayor's 5K run. So thank you, Ms. Brill, for all your efforts with the with the race and for all that was raised, and more importantly, for bringing the attention to all the families. What was great about the race is seeing the families in, with such pain, able to to converse, share, share experiences and and comfort one another. So we thank you for organizing that.
And not for nothing, it was great to see Jack Sayers.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely. He has served this town for many, many years, and it was good to see him looking good.
Yes. So really, Megan, thank you, Councilwoman, because I think that you did lay the groundwork in that run. You know, it might not have been as numerous, but I was very surprised to hear that it was our 32nd annual downtown run. And now that it is for ALS, and so many people did come out that are suffering with that or family members that are, I think it will just continue to grow. Excellent, beautiful day.
Council President, I have a question. I don't want to poll, but I want a question on 25422.
254, okay.
I spoke with Mr. Trink regarding this particular resolution. He stated to me that it has always been township practice for the Township Attorney's Office to prosecute code violations as listed in the resolution. Is that?
Since at least it hasn't, that's been with Mr. Trink as well. My understanding is.
Hi, here.
My understanding was, was there was a request from the Administrative Office of the Courts for us to do a reaffirming resolution, and that's something.
So there was no resolution required prior to that?
My position is, I did the research when this issue came up, and my my understanding is there's a specific statute that expressly allows the township attorney to prosecute code, not like 2C or municipal court stuff, more vehicle stuff, but specifically for violations of ordinances, which is, which is.
Thank you, Ms. Moon.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Here you go.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
All right. Ordinances on second and final reading. We have ordinance 2697-22, ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-14.3. This is the parking time limited on certain streets during certain hours, certain days of the revised general ordinance.
Is there a motion to introduce?
So move.
Second.
Okay.
Any comments, questions?
Hold on, I have to take.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Castellano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Two Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Any comments or questions on this ordinance? Or if you would like to?
We don't have any questions.
No.
That's okay, thank you.
Did you want to speak?
Chief, did you have any comments on this ordinance? This is the one for Main Street. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but Babcock.
Can she say just a few words?
Yeah, okay, you can wrap it up.
She need to say a few words, because I think it's good for the public to know.
We did have a conversation and we're fine with it, the administration, as long as downtown's good with it.
That's what I needed you to say. Thank you.
Just just a point to clarify, that out of the 50 parking spots in and around Torrey Corner and Main Street, we're creating seven 15-minute parking spots. Two at the corner of Llewellyn for Lilo's Bakery and the hair salon there. Sometimes they're just running in to get products. And then the other five spots are at the corner of Torrey Corner and Washington, so main to help the lightbulb cafe shop and, yes, she's too smart. And that's it. The rest is two-hour parking. We need to work on meters, we need to work on enforcement, but I know most of the cars that are hanging out too long, and I can go and say, with the sign, you can't park here anymore. I just, we need the ordinance to be able to, you know, do some enforcement and and help all of the business owners, you know, to turn over the cars. That's the point.
Thank you, Ms. Brill.
Good. Again, helping the business owners.
Is there a motion to approve 2697-22?
So move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Two Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
So I have a question now that we've had some comment. I didn't have any questions before. Now that you did, now that you just asked, so you made a comment that you said it was for specifically some of the businesses. What happens if those businesses leak? And and perhaps referencing a salon and 15 minutes? So are we taking that into consideration?
You're always going to have. So, yeah, a good example is Hot Tech. Hot Tech was right in in that spot that now is a beauty salon, a breeding store. When Hot Tech was in there, he absolutely needed that 15-minute parking in front of his store, and we couldn't get it, we couldn't make it happen. So with the way the area is set up, the two spots on the left will help any of the stores that are in there that need just a pickup of a cupcake or grab a cup of coffee, or if they're going to get like a salon or they need to be shopping at Americana Diner, you know, any of that, the two-hour parking will accommodate it. And then it only goes until 8 o'clock. After after 8 o'clock, then you're you're fine to stay there, you know, for four or five hours.
Okay, thank you. And when will signage and enforcement be put in place?
We're going to get signage.
So this won't go into effect until we have signage and?
We'll just have to make sure the meters are all worked.
I was going to say, that's my point.
Enforcement is going to take some time.
Enforcement is going to take some time. So before we go and start enforcing this, let's just make sure we have our house in order.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to be able to enforce it until there's a working meter.
Right.
We just, we need, we needed the engineering department to, you know, properly line the street between the road diet and what the county is trying to do. We need this ordinance in order to push well for that.
There's a conceptual point to update all the parking meters and everything throughout township, but it's kind of an infancy at the moment.
Thank you, Chief.
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
So for pending matters, I want to bring back up, if I may, Council President.
Yes.
So we, at some point before I joined the council, had a resolution that was being discussed for bamboo. And so I have received some calls, and while today it is not appropriate because it's not on our agenda, this is something that I want us to revisit as a council and as a ordinance. It is an invasive species, and it is continuing to cause the same problems that it created or had created three years ago. Unfortunately, the problem has just increased. But we do need to address that. We do need to have our property maintenance department look at some of those concerns. So I want to raise that issue and get it back on our radar.
Thank you very much, because I have been talking about that for a long time. And now that we do have our inspectors back and planning director, definitely something we can revisit.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Councilwoman, so questions. So, Mr. Moon, we never moved forward with that ordinance? I thought we, I thought we implemented somehow.
We never did. We never did. We didn't have enough inspectors.
I had to dig other materials. I think basically another municipalities ordinance that circulated, but this is kind of another township. I think that's where we left off.
And that's where we left off.
Can you, can you recirculate that if you? Thank you.
You got to do.
No, Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk?
I have it.
Sure we have a copy.
Right, and she'll send it to everyone.
Of course.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, she had the entire chain of communication, so she's amazing. She's amazing.
That's awesome. Oh, she is. She is. Council President, I do want to just bring up the discussion that the task force had last evening with respect to a moratorium with a, with the anticipation of giving notice to those who are in the wings, if you will, or in the pipelines, right? Somebody who has started their application, is focused on, you know, applying here. While the task force does recommend that we do take a pause by a moratorium, it also does recommend that we give some time and some notice. So if, let's say we, the council agrees to a moratorium, that we give a date specific as to when that's going to be implemented. I'll leave the rest to Councilwoman Castellano, because I know she had, she said tomorrow. I honestly.
That's not going to happen.
No, I don't support that.
Well, here's, here's the catch 22 on this. So we have folks, again, who came here this evening, and I see Mr. Gibbs is still here, and and I apologize, I want to thank you for your service.
Mr. Gibbs.
Again, he's, he's been so patient, and I feel your frustration. And because of that, so we have, again, we have five approved, we also discussed rescinding one.
We have five letters of support out. Let's use, yeah, let's use the right terminology.
You're correct, yes.
You're using the local support.
Yes, local support. And now we, that could turn into the four licenses. So again, what is the limit for micro businesses? We, I think we need to put a cap on that. So again, you have, you, so you, how can I put it without, I look at the lawyer, because I don't want to say what I can't say, so I apologize to the public for stuttering here. But if we are going, I just don't want to mislead these business owners anymore. That, that, and I feel like if you say January, which was the date that came up last night, that's just way too long.
That's the first date that came to my mind, was January of 2023.
But then they're still investing and they're still moving forward.
But they've already started.
But they've already started.
And it's like literally pulling the rug out from under them when they're in the process. So the, the, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, you were, you were speaking.
Well, and my point, and maybe I'm failing to articulate it correctly, is that I understand that, but that's no different from the beginning of the process, that people had started the process, and we only said we were going to take 10 by this date. And so I just don't.
So we don't have 10 yet.
No, 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 10, I'm sorry, 10 applications by this date.
Oh.
I keep, I, I keep, I keep forgetting that you, you folks aren't all in, my colleagues aren't all in all these meetings, so, so you're not privy to the the discussions that we have. So I just, again, my, I come from a place of not misleading folks, so, okay, so now they're going to move their applications forward and say we don't approve them. I don't want to have an issue with that, so.
But that was always the process, and you had to come to the community to get a letter of support from the municipality. So when we talk about misleading the public, I want us to be very, very clear that our process, as far as what we were going to do, is not unclear. We had a deadline that was imminent of March 15th. That was when the state application process was going to go live. We, as a municipality, because we had already approved cannabis in our township, we tried to make sure that the application process and those persons, bodies, entities that were prepared by that date had an opportunity to be heard from us and to receive the letter of support. What we didn't articulate clearly, and it's left to basically interpretation, was that after we passed March 15th, then what? And so now we're past March 15th, and we're in the then what process. And so the task force never set out to say that it was going to have monthly meetings. They never said that they were going to review applications monthly. So we are criticizing them because they did not articulate next steps, but they also have continued to meet and review applications. And so unfortunately, again, it's no one's blame, it's just what it is. The state gives licenses and the township gives licenses, and they're not in sync. That's not our fault, that's not the state's fault. Like, we're sitting around this table trying to say whose fault it is. It's not anybody's fault, it's a new process.
I don't think we're trying to place blame. What we're trying to do is just get clarity, because our, if anyone is following our ordinance, they are still investing in this business.
And that's how it was from the gate.
But our micro businesses have no limit, so they think they can just.
Because the statute, the statute does not, does not have.
Under our ordinance, we did not, we exempted micro business for a cap because we wanted to be flexible and allow, specifically the requirements for micro businesses, that they have to be whether within the municipality or contiguous, smaller in scale. We wanted to keep that option, we wanted to keep that option open. Now, as I said, we have a lot of really good candidates. A lot of them are residents. But you also have to balance that with how many, how many cannabis businesses is the council comfortable or comfortable with in total? So there's no specific number, but at the same time, especially now, when we haven't even had a cannabis business open, giving, giving the public notice, saying, we're going to take a little bit of, we're giving you a little bit of time, if you want to get an application in, this is a deadline, and then after that. Because the other problem, the other thing is, and I mentioned this before, is that the makeup of the council and the makeup of the advisory task force is going to change. Election season's coming up, and then January, there's going to be new appointments to.
The cannabis task force.
So again, the ordinance is supposed to meant to sort of reflect, okay, flexibility, because there's going to be different people coming in and holding positions. But when it comes to the little nitty gritty of policy decisions on, that's, at what point do we need to start reeling back the number of resolutions of support? Those are more specific policy decisions.
That was the point that I was trying to make.
But we have no one approved, so I just want to remind everybody that we have no one that has been, no.
We do. Well, not, not by, not by us, by the state.
Not by the state, yes. We have not, we have nothing.
But so, Mark, what you just said, it just sounds like we do need to amend our ordinance, because if we're going to leave it open like that, then people are going to continue to apply.
That's not what he's saying.
Pass a resolution. Right.
Pass a resolution.
Right, but that's our way of telling the public, especially telling the public.
So can I just say that after that March 15 rush, and if you'll recall, we had the opposite effect when, and that's why we decided to say, okay, we're going to be ready to go when the second round of applications are released, because we weren't prepared the first time, and applicants were getting really anxious to get their stuff to the state, but we had not yet completed our processes. Once we did complete the process, once we sent out all the resolutions in March, Chief, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we did put a auto reply on all of the emails that anyone who contacted us. So it's not failure to communicate, because when they applied or sent an email to inquire, there was an auto reply that said we are not presently taking applications. So the task force and the administration have worked collectively to make sure that we are clear, that we are communicating with the residents. Thereafter, when we heard back from some applicants that they were in the, in the pipelines, if you will, for the state, now we have to make the decision as the governing body, not the, the task force is an advisory body. But here's, here's what I want us all to be sure to understand. Yes, we've given out those resolutions of support to micro businesses. One is not a micro business, which is West Orange Wellness, who has been approved by the state, it's a dispensary, but they still have to come back to us for a license. So that, let's say, is one license. If this governing body decides to give them a license, that's one. Peace of, so that's a dispensary. Peace of mind is the second one that was given a license by the state, they still have to come back. Now, they're a cultivator. So I, I want us to understand that, yes, so two cultivators, because we just supported another one during the last council meeting, two cultivators don't have traffic, don't have pedestrian walk-in, right? That's just, and they're, they're, what's going to generate the largest revenue for us? So.
And those are micro.
Those are micros, so which, and and for those who are listening in the public, micro businesses are 2,500 square feet by, by legislation, no more than 10.
Employees.
Employees. So now, let's fast forward, and let's just say that in a year, the micro businesses that we did support do have a license, both from the state and from the municipality, they're micro businesses. Let's say that in a year, they want to convert because they've been successful, they have a. They have a larger floor plan. So they will have to come back to this council and say, we would like one of, a resolution of support because we want to expand and convert. And then they have to go to the state. If the state approves them, they come back here. Now, those are licenses that are in our ordinance that we have to provide. Right now, none of those licenses are spoken for. So I think that the time to change in ordinance will be once we have gone through the process, as Councilwoman Castellino says, we haven't had one open. Let's see what that fits, how it fits in our community before we start changing the ordinance. By resolution, which is, was a great suggestion, that we do these approvals or letters of support by resolution so that we're not changing ordinances and have to wait. So we can, as a council, decide, let's press pause so that everyone who is working on their application or even thinking about bringing their application here, and this is for those that we don't have yet. And I want to be very specific, for those that we don't have yet. The ones we have, we are reviewing. But for those that we don't have yet, or the ones that are considering applying, giving them a timeframe to say, this is it, we're going to press pause here. Because we still have, how many, we're still waiting for one. Yurkana is the one that we just provided a support for, so that's a cultivator. Chemistry is pending, Dogwood is pending, and New Jersey Library. So they have, we gave them a resolution of support. They're still a micro business. They have a conditional license from the state. They will be applying to convert that, that license to an annual, but it's still a micro business. So they're not going to have a license up to and until the time that they decide that they want to expand and convert. Then they have to go through the same process again. So I don't think that changing the ordinance at this time is necessary, but I do, and the task force did recommend that we do press pause so that we, we're not leading people on like, we're, we're going to accept your applications and we're going to look at them and probably support it because, A, inventory is limited, as our applicants already know. So I do think it's a good practice to pause.
I also want to make clear something. We, we crafted the requirements to create a low barrier of entry. In that, we are not requiring a deed or an executed lease to apply. You can come in with what's called a letter of intent, right? So, and to be honest with you, like, there's been some discussion of whether that was a mistake.
I can write a letter of intent, I'm a licensed real estate agent.
Right, but my point is, but my point is that there is, you know, we want, we didn't want to be that you had to have a signed lease and start paying rent and, or buy the property or be under some sort of process because we wanted to keep the barrier of entry low. So, we're, we, we're doing our best to not make it an overly burdensome process as much as reasonably possible. We have, we have to have some requirement, some sort of, you know, a property or somewhere identified. But at the same time, you know, we, we're doing our best or can to make it as painless as possible.
Accessible, as accessible.
Mr. Moon, I think this may fall, and Council President, if I may, this may fall into the category of the law of unintended consequences. I appreciate the intention behind keeping the barriers of entry low. And I also understand the argument for having a moratorium and I'm not making a judgment on that one way or the other right now. But I do know that when we communicate a moratorium, it will create a rush to get in before the moratorium closes. And if we don't simultaneously communicate a maximum number of businesses we're willing to have in this municipality, you will have far more people trying to get in the door than otherwise because some will say, if I'm late in the process, I don't stand as good of a chance, let me go somewhere else. And then they don't have false hope, they don't make an investment that is not going to show any return for them. So I do think if we are going to have a moratorium, we need to be clear about the maximum number of businesses we want, micro or otherwise, in town. And we need to communicate to that, communicate that to them simultaneously.
So why are we, why are we, why are we, why are we though saying we have been unclear? I think we go back to what we originally stated, which was that there were four licenses and an unlimited amount of micro businesses. I think also based on.
Well, Councilwoman, the reason why it's unclear.
I'm not done, please, thank you. What we know is that ultimately this body can approve, deny, or whatever have you, right? And so if we're going to have an unlimited amount of micro businesses, obviously, as this sitting body, we determine what unlimited means for us. And there is also some type of assumption that just because you open a micro business that you're automatically going to convert or desire to be a full licensed business. I don't think that's an assumption that anyone at this table can make because we're not the business owner, we don't know the business plan. And maybe there are people who just want to be a micro business forever. So, I don't agree with us holding licenses or opportunities because we know that we've said they're for micro businesses and they ultimately may convert. They may, but that's still our decision, not theirs.
When the time comes.
Yeah, when the time comes. So I, I just, I'm, I'm very concerned about stopping when we don't have anybody open. Because there's no guarantee that anybody who we've given a conditional letter of support or approval is going to get approved unless that is someone who has already been approved by the state. And it's my understanding, and you can certainly clarify, that even if you have approval by the state, you've still got to come to us.
Yes, you do.
So are we, so if you have prior approval from the state and you come to us, then how does that process look? Because there's no need to now, you, you already have one of your levels of approval.
I wasn't finished with my statement a moment ago.
I do, I do want to just answer that question with respect to how, what, how, for them to come back to us because they have a conditional license from the state. So when they get the conditional license, they're given 120 days to go find, you know, site control. So then, when they have site control and they get that resolution, then they apply for the conversion to an annual. It's still micro, but it's, it's an annual.
Councilmember, other friend.
Thank you, Council President. So, before I finish my comments or my questions, I want to address this perception about being unclear. The reason why people have repeatedly said it was unclear is because we said we were going to allow an unlimited number of micro businesses. And then when we, at some point, I think maybe four council meetings ago, stated that we weren't going to take anymore because those micros could become annual licenses. That was communicated directly to, let me finish, please. That was communicated directly to this council from that podium and we had much debate about it. So that's where the, the lack of clarity comes in. And that also is why we need to communicate what the maximum number of businesses we're willing to have in town is if we're going to have a moratorium. Again, I've not said whether I like, in favor of it or not, but if we are going to go that way, it is only fair to communicate to potential investors how many we're willing to have in total so that they can use that in their calculation.
That was the point I was trying to make before because it's not clear. I think that if we're saying it's unlimited, then people can continue to apply. And here, we're making this decision that we're not seeing them anymore. So why would they continue to, why should they continue to apply? That's my first question. My second question came up before in a previous discussion where we had, talking about applications that are pending. And it sounded like the discussion was that the task force was, well, maybe they could do this or maybe they could do that. Are you telling the applicants why their application is pending and what they need to do?
So my position as the legal counsel for the task force is that the task force should not be specifically discussing cures officially to every applicant because, for example, when we first started, we got 10 applications. If, if we had reached out to all 10 of those applicants, we would have 10 resolutions of local support. So, my position is we, the task force as a body, should be sort of play, treat everyone equally when they come through the, through the process. So, instead of letting some of them cure and just flatting that term down, no. It's been this, it's been the practice to basically sort of make considerations based on the applications that are before.
And so then they're just pending, they just stay pending. How do they know what they need to do?
That is communicated, that is communicated to them directly.
Okay, yeah, not to us, that's, that was my point. Are they being told? Okay, it didn't sound that way.
There was also, there, there's also a, there was a specific issue that needed to be addressed, that has since been addressed. Again, without getting the specifics, I mean, we can, I can talk about, I mean, we can talk about it in a second session if you want to call for that. But there was a specific issue that needed to be addressed regarding some of the applications that kind of, we need to figure out before we can move. And I'll just say that the issue has since been addressed.
Okay.
As long as the applicant knows.
And understand that that's not clear and that's opaque.
I'm fine with that.
But there's, there's specific reasons and I can discuss that.
I'm fine with that, but.
And we're not asking you to do that. I just wanted to make sure that that was being communicated to the applicant.
Sure.
Not necessarily to us, but to the applicant.
The, the other thing is this.
Well, before you get to the other thing. Because Council President is right. What you just said a moment ago, if I heard you correctly, was that we're not communicating what these cures need to be. If you're not telling them.
I, I, so yes, yes.
We can't give legal advice.
They, they are communicated.
If an application comes, come, if I, if I get an application before me and there's things that the task force doesn't really like officially, I, I, I've take, I've basically take, I've basically advised that the task force should just vote yes, no. Because that's the way we've been doing it from the beginning. However, I can't tell them what to do in their individual capacities as people. If they want to talk to people, they can do whatever they want. But my legal recommendation has always been that the task force is not going to officially tell an applicant, this is what you need to do to cure.
All right, so there's a problem there.
That's the problem.
Because Councilwoman Matu Brown has just said twice on this, in this meeting, that cures are being, let me finish, please, are being communicated to applicants. So if your official position as the attorney is that they should not do that and her position as the chair is that it has been done, there's some disregard of your legal advice and we have no mechanism to know, excuse me, we have no mechanism to know and it doesn't appear as if all of them have been told what needs to be cured. And that fosters distrust, mistrust, it's a lack of transparency. It makes people feel like the process is not fair. So if, if I've accurately characterized what I just heard with my own ears, we've got a problem.
It is, it is mischaracterized because whenever, let's just say, let's just say, Councilwoman Castellino wants to see an org chart that was not included in the application, that communication has been made.
Yeah, yes.
Org chart, so please, let's be very clear because the allegations that are being made here are completely false, incorrect.
So I've not made an allegation?
You absolutely just.
I am inquiring about the process.
So yes, for those type of things, if there's something missing or something that was missing from an application, those things are communicated to the applicant to sort of supplement or cure, and that, that sense of curing, yes.
But not to aid, not to aid in making sure the application.
Micro.
Not to aid in the, the application being approved.
So, yes.
These are just common.
Like, like an incomplete application.
Things like that, things that were specifically on the checklist that were required that maybe we're missing, yes. That, that is, that is something very different than, so.
Then you are next door to another, that's not what's happening.
Right, so it's like, so it would be inappropriate for me to tell an applicant what would make their application more desirable.
Exactly.
That's not happening.
That's not appropriate.
That's not happening.
No, the board doesn't do it, but I'll do it. I'll do it on my own and say, the, the.
I mean, but that's clear.
But you should.
Let the chief, let, let's.
He's on the board.
Please, yes. No, let the chief speak.
So, I mean, listen, there's emails, there's no secrets here. I, I've spoken to every candidate who wants to speak to me telephonically. They have my cell phones, emails, whatever, there's plenty of records here to, you know, prove what I'm saying. I'll let them know what was not desirable about their application and I'll do everything I can to help them find another spot. Because it's basically only been location for anybody who's been disapproved. So I'll, I'll, I called them up and say, hey, I heard there's a place for rent up on Pleasant Valley Way. Maybe you want to check it out? They'll check it out. I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
So, the other thing I'll say is this.
I disagree, I disagree. I, I think that this should be on the wrong.
If you, if you look at the reports, the evaluation reports, which are posted, which are posted on the website circulated this body, there are certain things that are in those reports that kind of give an indication of concerns that have come up regarding potential locations. For example, when the Yurkana application, if you look at the evaluation report, there's a whole analysis in there talking about, there's a specific concern by the task force about having multiple businesses concentrated in one area.
Right.
But addressing that, you know, whatever, for that specific case, because that's already been published. So if you read that, you now know that the task force has a concern about having multiple retails located in a certain area. So while I will not tell a specific applicant, oh, your problem is this, I can say in that report, there was a concern on another application that there were two locations that are very close to each other.
So, so Mr. Moon, to that point specifically, we had someone come a couple of meetings ago and they expressed their concern and disappointment because how would they know that there was another applicant in that same proximity? And so, I, I hear, I, I hear and I re, and I, I am very confident that nothing nefarious has been done, right? But at the end of the day, that is still a point. That, hey, we've got someone pending and they were right here with you or right two doors down from you. Is there anything we can do, no matter whether or not we do a moratorium on the process, given enough notice to the public, so, hey, if you're interested? But is there also a way now that we have no, new information and more concerns? So for instance, we could update that information that we put out and we could say on a map, there are locations that have received letters of support in these specific areas.
So.
Therefore, don't come to us for nothing in that area.
One of the things you'll see in the reports, and I do, and I, I specifically do this, is I include maps. This is where the proposed location is going to be. Again, these reports are circulated to you, they're posted on the websites, everyone knows, okay? They're available to the public. So they know the ones that have been approved and where they're going to be. And they also know that the task force has a specific concern that we don't concentrate retail businesses.
With the approved locations that's on our map?
Yes, on the evaluation.
So, 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 yeah, so when you look at a report, I have a little Google printed out. I, I always include it as part of it because again, I'm, I'm trying to show where these places are going to be. Now, I, there, there's always, could we, could we adopt an ordinance specifically saying what the criteria is and whatnot? Yes, but the problem is this. These rules are basically what's entrenched in the law, but the preferences or priorities or values, those are going to change with new council people and with new advisory boards. So, the whole idea was to keep it flexible enough so that new bodies, new members of task forces, they can come in. And also quite say, quite frankly, the community standards change, right? So, you know, before we start firmly capping down strict requirements and criteria, which you guys can do, you know, you guys tell me what you want to be put in there, I'll draft an ordinance. But I can tell you that the intent when the ordinance was first drafted was to create some level of flexibility. And yes, it may have become an issue as far as unclarity, but the reason is because, you know, there's going to be a new task force that's going to be assigned starting in the new year. There's going to be new members of the council after the election. So it's sort of like, I, you know, I can, I can lock it in, but like then every new, then every new council, we're doing new ordinances and stuff like that.
But is it possible though, I hear that you're saying that there is a map in the application. Is it possible perhaps for us to get on our website, proposed cannabis locations, pending cannabis locations in town? So that someone who might be interested could see where something has already been tentatively approved.
Does that map show the zone for business zone and industrial zones?
So, 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 so right now, so the zoning requirements, those are clear. Those are specifically clear.
Right, is that on your map?
So, so the way the, it's not really, like, it's not like a map of the whole town saying these are where the things are. Because the other thing is this, I also want to be clear about this, right? In January, when there's a new task force, maybe they might decide, you know what? We don't mind if they're all concentrated together. Or this, or when the new council, we don't mind if they're all concentrated together. That might be something that happens. So, I'm not saying it's, it's not a strict requirement, but it's, it's basically an expressed value of what the task force has said. Now, you might even disagree with it. So you might even say right now, Mr. Moon, you should advise the task force that we don't share that value or we don't share that priority or concern. the task force that we don't share that value, or we don't share that priority or concern. That's relevant as well. But that's part of the reason why you have two members of the council that are on the task force.
Well, I'd like to.
I didn't answer my question though. My question was, does that map itself have the zones where it is of it, where?
There is, there is a zone map.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a report, the, the, the zone is confirmed as part of the narrative of the report, but there's, it's basically like a Google map. So I didn't like draw in like an I or a B1 or a B2 and.
I'd like to revisit what the chief said a minute ago. I think your intention is honorable, right? I think you're trying to help people, and I think that's what we should do. Uh, my concern is that it's, it's, um, I don't know that it's, it's across the board for everybody. So it sounds like if folks either reach out to you, if there's a question or concern, then you respond and you're helpful. What if they don't? How do we, are, are we proactive in, in that same, that same approach that you've taken?
So I don't think there's anybody that, um, was declined and, and didn't reach out. That, um, so if you start with our, our first round, where we did shut it down on March 15th, um, uh, uh, Councilwoman Castellino said that we, we didn't cap that at 10, I, we just happened to get 10, that's the way it worked out. But, um, so there were, and this came up on our, in our discussions last night in the meeting, it's, there, there were some that were turned down because like there were two in the, in, in a mall, close proximity to the school. Task force didn't like it, recommended to the council not to grant it, and that was, I think, in the whole resolution, right?
Yes.
So it's in the report, it's all there. But, you know, in hindsight, we never said to those folks, hey, maybe you can find a better spot, you're a good applicant, we like your, your background, was new to us. Um, we probably could have done that better. But since that time, all of the, um, and they're mostly going to be all micro applicants now, they're going to be people who, um, typically went to the state first to get their approval. That, some of the members don't like that, maybe some of the council members don't like that, that people went to the state first. But, um, everybody should bear in mind, that's the social equity piece. That's the piece where, I'm not a person of means, I'm a person of color, I worked hard, I saved my money, I can't afford fancy lawyers, I can't afford cannabis experts to come in and tell me how to do this, I'm going to get together with my husband and I'm going to make this happen. They're the people we're trying to help out. They're the people I talk to every day. The Corey's, um, the, the Pure Natural Vibes, they're the people I'm, I'm talking to. So there's, there's nobody that we haven't reached out to, and there's nobody that certainly that has reached out to me that I haven't been in contact with.
I appreciate that and accept that.
And I don't think, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, just one last thought. I know the, almost like common sense, you think there's going to be this big rush if there's a, a moratorium in place, but the only people that really are going to come to us now are people who went that route and went to the state first. And they have to be either a town resident or live in a contiguous town that I think also doesn't offer cannabis. Um, so like Verona's out, because I think they're having cannabis.
I don't know if it's, I don't want to put the requirement up.
All right. But even if, even, even if, even as a council, if the ca, if the, if the CTF maybe recommended somebody, let's just arguably say from Verona, I don't think we'd be out of line for a council to say like, well, your town, you live in Verona and your town offers this, you know, we're, we're gonna kind of stay focused on our own folks here. But Orange doesn't offer it, so you know, I think we gotta look to the people in Orange. Um, probably nobody else, right on the perimeter?
Well, one other thing that that, that process brings up, how are we considering, like, what is the process for considering these applications? There was the issue about one applicant being too close to another. And so how are we reviewing these by date? Like as, how are we deciding which to review?
So the, so the applicant that was considered to be, uh, to, there was two, the, the location itself wasn't looked, um, upon favorably by the majority of the task force, I wouldn't say it was unanimous, but by the majority. Um, and the one that had been approved that was in somewhat of a proximity, um, was approved prior. That, that was one of the original in by March 15th.
So the second application came in after that?
Yeah, in, after, yeah, around May, I want to say.
Last, last question I had, um, um, New Jersey Library has a letter of support?
So.
It's not yet.
So.
No, it's, it's gonna be.
I just heard that tonight.
No, it's gonna be recommended for.
So, I have to, I can't, again, I'm, I don't want to talk about a pending resolution.
Okay, yeah.
What about the resolution we were supposed to have on tonight to re-
We shouldn't be talking about it in council meeting.
So I apologize that I said that it was approved, um, but last night, we took a straw vote from the advisory board, and they are going to make a recommendation to the council. That's why I said there were two, and now there's one pending, so.
So again, so a, a recommendation is, a recommendation is coming.
Yes.
Ultimately, the, 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 it's not approved until you guys vote.
Until, absolutely.
That was, that was why I asked.
Well, she said the task force. She didn't say the candidate.
Yes, I didn't say the council, I said the task force.
It's been recorded, so we can, it's been recorded.
So, so I, I, I just, if I can, I mean, because I know we still have executive session to go to, so I, I want to just circle back to.
No, there is none.
Oh, there is none?
All right.
That doesn't mean we want you to keep talking.
I hear you. But I, I just, I just want to be clear for the residents, that the process has always been to favor micro businesses. If this council, as the task force recommended, um, does decide to put a pause, we ask that the pause be given enough time, January, so that people that are in the, in the works are going to be able to get those applications in. And to the chief's point, you know, we didn't see that happen the last time, um, I don't anticipate it happening now. Um, the emails that we're seeing coming in are from these bigger, big MSOs, which we are not supportive of, sorry, MSOs, but we want to make sure that we have, you know, um, follow the social equity piece, legacy owners, that's our focus. And I, I want to commend the task force for doing an incredible job, and thank you, Mark, also for, um, putting up with all of this, um, back and forth, even with the task force, because this is all new to everyone. And to, to the, those who are thinking about considering applying, the evaluation reports that have been determined, um, by the council are on the webpage, there are maps there, you can look and see why we didn't approve or why we didn't recommend. All of that information is there. I really don't understand how much more clear. And, and what I do understand is the frustration that when you've gone the route of the state first, you've got a very short timeline to hustle to get a property, site control, and here in West Orange, we are very, very limited. So yeah, there is a lot of frustration around that, but the clarity, the clarity, the communication, please do not be, do not misunderstand. There has been clarity, there has been communication. If this council decides to have a moratorium, all I ask is that we consider putting a date to, um, to January to give those people, those applicants some time to get them in.
So was there a recommendation from the task force to do a, a moratorium?
Yes.
Yes.
It wasn't unanimous.
No.
Was there, was there a recommended, whether it was unanimous or not?
Yes, with the time.
Majority rules in every type of body.
I know, I lost that.
With, with, with the timeframe of, um, January.
So then, uh, is that recommendation being brought to the council this evening?
Uh, no.
Because I have to drop the resolution.
He has to drop the resolution.
Okay.
It'll be, it will, you know, um, come during.
It'll be, it'll be.
The next council meeting.
That's fine, that's fine.
Just, just want to say, because this is a matter of public record, I understand Councilwoman Matu Brown's, uh, desire to say that there's been clear communication. We've had numerous complaints from that podium about the lack of clear communication, whether you agree with it or not.
I have to say that I do disagree.
Can I please finish? Can I please?
No.
Finish.
Of course you can, you absolutely can.
By all means, please finish.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I understand it may be problematic for you, you may, inconvenient or uncomfortable to hear that. But it is true, and we have to address it. We talked about multiple ways tonight, and I do believe Mr. Moon agreed with some of them. And I think that will help the process going forward. Now, Councilwoman Matu Brown, if you'd like to.
So to the public, I do want to say that, you know, once again, I will reiterate everything, every piece of information that you need to, uh, to review is on the website. Communication has been very clear with, um, the task force through the chief and everyone else. The fact that we cannot give you a date certain as to when we're going to meet is simply because there is sometimes an issue with having a quorum, particularly when it's August. As you will see, Ju- July and August for this council, we have one meeting a month. And that's because people are traveling and they're on vacation. But everyone who has reached out, everyone who has emailed, does receive communication, does receive determinations of what may need, what may need to be cured, and that communication is clear. There is nothing uncomfortable about the fact that I created this and I am spearheading it with the support of residents and, and staff members here in town. Um, nothing uncomfortable about that whatsoever. But I appreciate your observation.
All right, I, can I, can I?
Please, Councilwoman Castellino.
Okay, real quick, I know, it's 10:20, it's an early night for us, but, uh, I'll try to make this quick. So here's my concerns and my observations, uh, being on this committee. Um, one, and again, this is a work in progress, but I really feel that there shouldn't be any applicants coming to the task force for an interview unless they have all their documentation. They shouldn't have to be called up or get a phone call from us to ask for their documentation. So we need to be clearer on our application, that you will not get an interview without the following, then if they can't follow a simple instruction such as that, we should not be interviewing them. That's, that's number one. Number two, um, you know, we, we learn as we go. So what I've learned, uh, from having the experience and the time to in, interview the candidates, is that, um, there's a limitation on how many could, how many people can enter each establishment. And which means if they are crowded and they're a small micro business, well, the patrons, if they're busy that day or that particular time of day, will be waiting outside. So, you know, again, I look at this through many, when we look at loca, uh, locations, we look at, you know, how close are you to a main intersection? Is there going to be traffic backup? Well, you know, so these are all things I know the planning board may review, but I, again, this is folks investing their money. You know, the planning board could be a year away, you know? So I, I think we're all, you know, versed in this enough to, and know the town well enough, what would work and what wouldn't work in certain locations. So I just want you all to keep that in mind when you hear about different locations. Um, and, and the third point I want to bring, uh, too, is the way the task force, um, has operated, and I really commend the chief, you, you've been awesome, you've been wonderful. But I, I think it's been too burdensome and time consuming. Now, again, I'm not the mayor, that's not my call, um, and I'm not the BA. Um, but, um, a lot of the time you have been spending on this, I, I like to see in other areas. So I don't think the, the bulk of it should be placed on the chief, not that that was done intentionally, that's just kind of the way this, this worked. You know, I don't know if it should go back to Mr. Moon, because you're, you're, you've been, you know, assigned to this. So again, all of these conversations and long emails and all, all of this, it, it, you know, it, I just don't see it being the chief's response, responsibility with all that he has to do within the township. I mean.
So, so the problem sort of is, is again, it's the, part of it is also the reality is that the idea of speaking for a group of people and saying, this is what a, it's basically like saying, this is what the council believes. You guys are five different people, five different opinions, five different sets of values maybe. So like for, for me to respond on behalf of the task force and say, this is, you, do you know what I mean? So that, that's part of the challenge, right? So I can't say, well, the task force would prefer this or that because.
No, I don't expect you to.
One member can say one thing, one member can say a nap. And, and quite frankly, but again, my bigger concern has always been that I just want a fair process.
Yes.
Right? Where everyone is treated equally and, and has the same opportunity. Now, that doesn't mean that everyone is going to get a license, I want that to be clear. Because there are specific interests that have been expressed, I think, by members of this body as well as members of the task force. Like, for example, you know, there were, there were, during this process, there were comments made that they, that this, the council wanted to see more applicants of color and more applicants fro, that are residents in this town. And since those comments were made, every single one that's come before you has been an applicant of color and an applicant that lives in town. Because the task force took the message that was given to them and took it seriously in their consideration. So again, now, did we codify those things? No, obviously not. We, you know, I would say that these are not things that should be codified. But there needs to be a little bit of fluidity. Now, whether, you know, I can handle general broad procedural questions always, like, you know, what are the requirements and things like that, um.
But that's all this should be.
Yeah.
I mean, this is why I think we're in a situation with folks coming to the podium and folks expecting things that, that.
That's not why. You have to have site ownership of the location, that's the law.
Yeah, but there's been conversations had and things are being expected, and that's not fair to the applicants.
I will tell you this, that there were, one of the factors wa, was that there was a specific incident of a, of a, potentially of a legal issue with, between two of the applicants, for lack of a better word, like, right, um, we had to figure out how we're going to handle it. To be honest with you, it, it, it was, it was, it was an issue that I didn't anticipate was going to happen, we had to figure out what to do with it, and that caused the delay. Now, I can't go out and explain, I don't want to air everyone's sort of put it out there. So I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to basically say, the reason your application's getting hold up is because we got to deal with this stuff. Because it's not appropriate for me to do that. And quite frankly, my recommendation would be not.
And, and rightfully so, because you're attorney representing us, and that's what you're supposed to be doing. So again, I go back to keep this simple, as opposed to, you know, because then, this is how we're getting accused of, then we, you set us up for favoritism, that we're, we're looking this applicant versus that applicant. It should be a very fair and equal process to all applicants. So if they don't have their paperwork, we should not be interviewing anyone. If they don't have site control or a letter of intent, valid letter of intent, we should not be interviewing them, meaning the task force. So this way, that prevents if every, you know, prevents moving forward. Again.
We did reject, uh, one from Senate 11 that did not have.
Yeah, we have rejected a few in the beginning. We're on a good roll in the beginning, and then it kind of got muddied. So again, nobody's fault, it's just the way things rolled out. Um, I think moving forward though, I'm not comfortable to saying, okay, we're going to take more applicants to January 1st. I say, if you're in now, you're in, and let's put a hold on anything else into, until January, after January 1st.
And just so that the public understands that the reason why, um, the discussion came up with the task force, um, was because we don't want to have a bottleneck, if you will, of applicants that we're not going to get to, because the state, while we anticipated the state having responses for those applications that we have supported, by September, didn't happen. And they too only met one time in August, did not meet at all in July. So there are so many different moving pieces in this entire process, that trying to say that the task force is not doing what they're supposed to do is just, it's just, um, it's conflating the truth is what it is. Um, I do want people to understand that, though be clear though, we have been very, we have been fair with the applications that we have reviewed. Those that are coming before us, the ones we, again, don't bring to you are because they're too close to a school, or they're in a building with apartments above that, you're not going to entertain that, right? That's why Councilwoman, Councilwoman Castellino and I are on there, because we all worked on the ordinance, we, we drafted it, we reviewed it, um, I would assume, approved it. And so we're not going to bring you those things. I think that the moratorium for right now, until we have answers from, the state could come back and say, for all the ones that are pending, they, they're, they're not approved.
Yeah.
And then we start the process again.
Councilwoman, I do want to correct you. Um, the only thing that's not, every application we've gotten so far, you've seen.
Yeah.
Every single one has been either part of an evaluation.
Yes.
It's either been a recommendation to, um, adopt the resolution, or a recommendation not to adopt the resolution. Now, we haven't gotten to all of them yet, there's, there's, I believe there's, as I said, there's one forthcoming that you'll be getting, and then there's one after that currently that's pending. But every single application that has come, you've seen.
And, and also, just for the public who, who's listening to this conversation or this dialogue, the people that do come to the podium, the, those applicants, yes, they're frustrated, and we completely understand their frustration, because they went to the state first, now they have a timeline. But we also have a process that we have to follow, and there is no way that we can tell you, you know, two weeks from now, we're going to have you in, or, um, a month from now, we're going to have you in, which is why we decided to recommend the moratorium. There is just no clear cut way of doing it, except to stay faithful to our process, you know, as the state stays faithful to theirs. know, as the state stays faithful to theirs. So the frustration that we hear up there, I completely accept, I completely understand, but we have a process.
Thank you.
Hi. Do you have a set meeting date per month that people would know?
If we had a meeting, no, there's no reason to meet monthly, we meet as needed.
So, right now, all we're doing is we're getting through the applications, that's all we're doing. We're not talking about further policy and things like that. To be honest with you, I, there are a bunch of things that I would love for the task force to address that we need to get moving on, but we've been digging out of trying to get through the applications, that's what we.
Well, that's my point about, are you meeting regularly enough to get through that?
But the other thing is, it's a volunteer task force, so it's like, we kind of have the subject of people's availability.
And like I just said, July and August, this council only meets once a month, these are volunteers, they're parents, school kids, on vacation, it was.
So are the other commissions.
Yeah, that's true.
But we should, we should moving forward, starting in January, make it like, so everybody knows, it's the third Wednesday of the month, it's the, you know, whatever that date may be.
Why would they meet if there's nothing on the agenda? If they have no more applications?
Then you don't have to meet.
They're saying they still have pending applications.
But not in January, if we're gonna, yeah.
In other words, you make the commitment like we do with our other, with our other commissions, and you, and if you meet, you meet, if you don't have an application, you don't meet, it's not, this isn't brain surgery.
But, so, so, so.
We don't have a.
So, Councilwoman, for example, the, sort of the second part of the process, local license applications, there's still like, like, that's, again, that's another example of something that I probably wouldn't make a public meeting, because it's gonna be the actual application forum.
Right.
So instead of making that public, it's good, it's, but it's something we have to meet on and review and something like that, but, again, we're trying to keep up with the applications to do the best we can to get through that part of it, at the very least, so that they can get the resolutions going in. But there's plenty more to do, even if we do have a moratorium, so.
Well, the one reason why to have a resolution at the next council meeting.
Based on, based on the discussion that I will.
But I think, to save everybody angst, is there, like, what date do you putting the stop on?
Ninety days, you have to give people ninety days notice for something this significant.
The task force recommended January be that date, it's obviously up to the council, but I'm supportive of January.
But again, but that means that you'll take applications up to January first, even if, as opposed to the ones that are already in, again, I don't understand.
Yes, because if there are applicants right now who have started the process, who have either signed a lease, gotten a letter of intent, this is.
Well, we talked about at the last meeting, we were gonna put a stop on it, and this is what I mean.
Yeah, no, we did discuss it, but ultimately, it wasn't, it hadn't been discussed, it wasn't, it wasn't discussed privately. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I finish speaking? Okay, because I was answering Councilwoman Castellino, what we discussed the last time had not been discussed by the task force, and I wanted to be able to bring you a recommendation that was made by the task force after that discussion. So that discussion happened yesterday, Mr. Moon will have a resolution, depending on, you know, with the recommendation of the task force, if this council, for the next meeting, if this council decides that, that recommendation that says moratorium in January, that that's not acceptable to this council, it's totally up to this council to decide that. And as far as Councilwoman Castellino, what you were saying, are you gonna accept applications till January? Yes, because, and that's the purpose of putting that timeline on there, because there may very well be some people that have already started the process and maybe are collecting a couple of things and intended to submit the application.
The sentiment out there is people feel we're gonna be giving unlimited number.
They can feel that, but if we make it clear.
All right.
But that's the issue, we haven't made it clear, we, excuse me, if we are going to go forward with the moratorium, and we are accepting that people are making preparations to submit an application now, as soon as we communicate that there will be a close to the application acceptance process, those folks that wanna get in the door will accelerate what they're doing and try to. If we don't communicate, and there's already been expressed publicly and privately, a desire to limit the number of cannabis businesses in town, if we don't express that somehow to them, we are providing folks with false hope, and that is just another example of a lack of transparency, opaqueness, a lack of trust in the process, and it's gonna lead to distrust in us and how we do that business, and it's gonna cause some people to lose money unnecessarily. They could decide to switch gears and apply somewhere else if they knew we were coming close to a cap, and I think we do need to communicate that. So if we're gonna take a moratorium, we need to let people know what we're willing to accept in town from a number of business standpoint.
Totally agree, duly noted, let's move on. Are we ready to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Night, West Orange.
Good night.
Good night, West Orange.